Okay, welcome, everyone. It's 5:30 PM here on January the 15th, 2024. And I'll call the meeting to order. At this time, I'll just note that Mayor Body is away this week, as is Counselor Dodd. And we have Counselor Merton joining us virtually. I hope everyone's had a happy new year. We have a little bit of a holiday agenda before us this evening, a little bit of a short night, and occurring on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So I think if we can remember that famous individual south of the border and try to live to the ideals that he professed, we will be part of building a pretty strong society. So a pretty special day celebrated by a lot of people for very good reasons today. Next item before us is call for additional business. Counselor Farmer.
I've got a handful of additional business pieces around community need and various and sundry things.
Thank you. Any further items? Not seeing any. And note that Counselor Merton's not raising her hand, so she's good for me to move on at this time as well. Item three is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations to be made at this time from any members? Not seeing any. Item four is confirmation of the council minutes held on December 18th, 2023. Counselor Middleborough.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Merton, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on December 18th, 2023 be adopted as printed.
And any questions or comments to those minutes? All those in favor? And those are carried unanimously? Item five is motion to move council into committee of the whole.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Merton, that city council now move into committee of the whole to consider public meetings, deputations and presentations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports of city staff, consent agenda, committee minutes, matters postponed, motions for which notice was previously given, and additional business.
And all those in favor? And that's carried. Item six is public meetings. This evening, we have none, and we have no deputations this evening under item seven. So we're quickly down to item eight, which is public question period. Are there any questions to be asked before council this evening? If so, just please step up to the microphone, state your name, your place of residence, and we'll assist with turning the microphone on. Staff, come on up.
I was painting, and I didn't get a chance to change. Not that you guys care. And Rogers TV can only see like here up, hopefully. My name's Andrea. I have a house at Fourth Ave East. Recently joined a community action group collective that John Frommer is a part of. I'm also a freelance journalist. I have two questions. My first one was the, I personally didn't take a loan, nor did any of the small businesses I've had need one, but I know that Thursday is the deadline for the, I guess, to get a $20,000 relief from as much of a $60,000 COVID small business loan. And I'm just wondering if the city's done any surveying. I understand that you probably won't be able to answer this today, but any surveying of how that might affect the downtown and the small business area in terms of whether small businesses are going to be able to pay it back by the March deadline or get this $20,000 relief? There's been a lot of news coverage lately of alternative crediting and that type of thing. So it's been, we've really seen the Owen Sound downtown bounce back over the last couple of years. So just want to make sure that's not going to affect anybody too much and just see if there's any sort of strategy behind it. And then the other question was, just wanted to have some idea of like homelessness stats, like how many, as compared to other towns about this size and this far out of Toronto or, you know, comparable rural towns? And that's a question for something that came up at the, it was rebound Owen Sound. No, it's called community, I've already forgotten, community action group, I think. So, thank you.
Thanks for those questions. Counselor Kepke.
Thank you, your acting worship. You could stay at the podium because we may have questions for you. My first question is, the loan you're speaking about, I'm presuming is a provincial or federal loan, so that doesn't really have the city. You can't speak until it gets green, okay? And my other comment is regarding homelessness. The County of Gray looks after that, so I think your question should be directed to them. But the acting mayor may have other comments.
Well, I'm just going to interject. I'll note that is a federal program, the SEVA loan, and there was correspondence forwarded from the County of Gray last fall, which was speaking to that item. Locally, we haven't pursued anything within the city of Owen Sound. Look to the Director of Community Services if she wishes to comment on that as well.
Thank you, and through you, Acting Mayor. In terms of homelessness stats, if Andrea, I'll give you my email, and maybe we can connect. There's a really good presentation that Josh Gibson from the County of Gray has shared, and he has the number of people on their by names list and has some really good stats. So I'm happy to connect you with him and share that presentation.
Okay, thank you for asking those questions this evening. Sure.
Okay, yeah, I think particularly the national news coverage on this issue has been looking at the number of restaurants and the health of downtown areas that are going to be affected if a lot of these small businesses go bankrupt or need to get closed as a result of the loan. So I think probably won't see the effects fully until after March. So I think it's more just curious if there's sort of a strategy for, you know, small business closures and the health of the downtown, if it is affected, any sort of proactive measures that, you know, if this does become a more pressing issue over the next, you know, six months, just because it is one of the tail end of the COVID programs that'll have repercussions for a small downtown area?
Okay, thank you very much for answering, or for those questions this evening. And I'll just note as well, for your benefit, the Chair of the River District Board is joining us as well tonight, so he's able to hear those comments and further them along as well. Counselor Farmer.
Thank you through the Chair and maybe to the Chair and folks. I'm curious, so yes, a federal grant, but Andrea's asking, I think, about like the extent to which we, local businesses are made aware of, or like who keeps track of information around that? Is that something that the River District helps to coach around with their outreach? Is that a Chamber of Commerce thing? Who is, is that like economic development? Who locally would be sharing that information, doing that coaching and keeping track of the impact of those bigger trends?
I'll speak, Counselor Kepke, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment, I think anyone who got a loan, that would be a personal item, and I don't know if they want to share that with everybody. So I don't know that anybody would have statistics on that. It's personal to me.
And I'll note, there's information that continually would go to the loan recipients from their lender. There's also advocacy has been done by the CFIB as well as the Chamber of Commerce nationally and Provincial Arms. So there's been lots of opportunities for involvement and being informed. Was there anything you wish to add, Director Coulter, as well?
Those are all great resources. I would just add through the, for the River District businesses in particular, in the newsletter is a link to the County of Gray Business Enterprise Center, and they have a great number of resources for small businesses as well.
Yep, okay. All right, so our next item before us is under item nine, correspondence received for which direction of council is required. This is a memo from the Deputy Clerk regarding the River District 2024 budget. Over to you, Stacey.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Gregg. The draft 2024 River District budget was presented to the River District Board on November 8th, 2023, at which time the board directed staff to proceed to schedule a public meeting for the public to provide feedback on the proposed budget. The River District Board held a public meeting on January 10th. One individual attended the meeting and provided comments on the budget. No other comments were submitted. Section 205, subsection two of the municipal act requires business improvement areas to submit their budgets to council for approval. As such, the board directed staff to forward the budget to council for final approval, and it has been included in the agenda package for council's review. If council is satisfied with the 2024 River District budget, a motion will need to be made to approve the budget as presented.
Okay, Counselor Kukureja.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move the motion that in consideration of the memo dated January 11, 2024, from the Deputy Clerk respecting the River District 2024 budget, City Council approves the budget as presented.
Okay, I'll just go to Counselor Hamley, then Counselor Farmer next.
I just wanted to ask about, I noticed that the money paid to the city for complimentary parking's gone down, and I was just wondering the reason for that.
At the time that complimentary parking was put into force and the DIA started contributing, we looked at the total cost of providing that service, which include debenture payments on existing capital. In 2023, we made the final payment on one of those debenture instruments, so that expense fell away, and we passed on 100% of that savings to the DIA.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Farmer.
Through the Chair, I'm curious, there's been some maybe public commenting questions around the budget, and particularly, I saw some questions being asked around celebration. And I think that's one of those lines in a ledger that can mean a lot of things. I was wondering if either a member of the board or the Chair here, or the Director could speak, just add some clarity to, when we put aside $5,000 for celebration, what does that mean? I assume it's not birthday parties for the board, but what is it?
Through the Chair, those expenses relate to a couple of things that the board does, including their audit. But the annual celebration of the membership is an event where members gather, they're invited. It's an opportunity for them to network and get together and really, you know, get to know their neighbor in the River District. They allocate a budget of $5,000. It's open to all the River District members. Last year, it was delivered significantly under budget. I don't want to say exactly what the number was, but it was in a report that was at the River District last meeting, but it was significantly under budget.
Okay, good questions. I know I hear from different members, they enjoy that night, which Director Coulter just spoke of as an opportunity. Many of them work hard, and they lack that ability to be able to even meet and greet their neighbors. So that was an opportunity that many enjoyed, being able to see some of their peers and colleagues at that celebratory event last year. So we do have a motion that's on the floor, not seeing any further questions at this time. All those in favor of the motion? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 10, we have no reports of city staff this evening. So we are down to item 11, which is the consent agenda.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Gregg. On the consent agenda this evening is a report respecting a housekeeping amendment to the municipal accommodation tax and a report respecting the award of a tender for traffic signal maintenance. There are minutes for receipt from the Community Safety and Wellbeing Planning Advisory Committee, the Owen Sound Police Board, and the River District Board. Business licenses were issued to Bike Face Cycling, which relocated to 625 Sixth Street East, Power Fade Golf, which relocated to 290 Ninth Street East, BIM Health Services Limited Partnership is the new owner of Bay Shore Physical Therapy at 1450, 15 First Ave West, Tasha Tupper is the new owner of Body Science at 781 Second Avenue East, 180 Smoke Babe Store is located at 101 10th Street East, Seniors Transportation Services is a home occupation located at 655 17th Street East, and O'Shares located at 263 10th Street East. The last item on the consent agenda is the information package of full listing is available at 11G.
Thank you. And are there any items in the correspondence, or sorry, the consent package that any members would like to speak to separately?
Not separately.
Not seeing any? Okay, Counselor Middleborough.
Moved by myself that in consideration of the items listed on the January 15th, 2024 consent agenda, City Council, one, receives items 11A to 11G, and two, approves the recommendations contained in items 11A and 11B.
Any questions this time on those? Not seeing any? All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. And we'll just, yeah, yeah, I'm just going to go, the first two reports from staff, they're just administrative really, and, I mean, the one is administrative regarding short-term rentals and the award and awarding of a tender. Any questions from any members regarding those? Counselor Farmer?
Thank you through the Chair. I've got a question that came up out of the report 11B around the traffic signal maintenance. And I've been exploring some best practices around street safety and promotion of active transportation. And one of the ideas that's come up in a few places in the reading and the learning that I've been doing are the idea of removing redundant signals in favor of four-way stops. And I think of an intersection like Ninth Street East and Third Avenue, where there are often people waiting at red lights when there's no one coming in opposite directions as one example of a place where a four-way stop can reduce wait times and move folks through. But I don't know, do we ever consider removing signalized intersections, or do we ever reexamine whether a signal is warranted once we have one installed? Because it strikes me that we could save money long-term if we've got things that are not best practice from a street safety or a flow perspective. Yeah, that raised my curiosity.
Okay, a really good question for Operations Committee, but we'll see if the Director of Public Works and Engineering is able to give you some insight there this evening.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counselor Farmer. It's been a number of years since our transportation master plan has been undertaken. That, so in that light, I assume that there are a number of different methodologies that we can look at to update our traffic network, and that would be something that would be best assessed during the transportation master plan the next time we go through that, which should be, it should be in the next few years. I don't remember off the top of my head if it's in the capital plan at this point in time, but it would be coming soon. I think that there has been a delay because Owen Sound hasn't seen a huge increase in population growth, which is often a trigger to reassess, reassess the transportation network. But that would be something that we should look at soon.
Counselor Kepke.
Thank you. To the Director, is Third Avenue East a county road? And if so, would they have jurisdiction over a streetlight?
Thank you, Counselor Kepke, through Deputy Mayor Gregg. Yes, it is actually, like where Third Avenue East turns into East Bay Shore Road. Yes, all of that is a county road. South of 10th Street, it may change off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but a good chunk of it is.
I kind of think it is all the way through, right from Sixth Street on. So they would certainly have comments regarding removal of a streetlight there.
Thank you for triggering that, too. In fact, there are a number of streetlights that we have that are completely in county jurisdiction. So I would have to check and see if the one that Counselor Farmer is referring to is a county set of signals. However, anything that is in their purview would obviously require their input.
Counselor Kukureja.
And this is just out of my own curiosity. It's, I think, not related directly to this report that we have over here. Are we in the future looking at the lights on the Second Ave East, like the general lights that go all the way up? Like, yes, the timing of those lights?
I think we're tracking a little bit sideways here in terms of just, it's an awarding of a tender for the maintenance of the lights, and there's some good questions been asked, but they're certainly definitely relevant to Operations Committee's purview and ask them within the committee context. There's ongoing work that gets done by staff and consulting professionals to be able to evaluate the lights on an ongoing basis. So I think I'll go back to, was there anything within the item 11C, Community Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee Minutes that you wish to speak to? Counselor Farmer.
Thank you through the Chair. Yeah, the last quarter, Community Safety and Wellbeing Planning Advisory Committee met in December 8th. For background, Owen Sound is represented formerly by myself, soon to be Counselor Hamley, as well as the Director of Community Services. And there were a few things of note in that meeting. Firstly, was a presentation from Gray Bruce Pride about issues impacting the LGBTQ QIAP+ community and ways that organizations and service providers can better support and provide service to that community. That conversation also generated a discussion about the issue of hate groups renting municipal lands and facilities, as some of our neighboring municipalities experienced last year. That's something that I think we in Owen Sound need to be aware of as we, as well, to make sure that our rental agreements help to protect us from accidentally hosting organizations that would seek to limit the rights and safety of marginalized folks. There was also discussion about the new crime prevention table. So the Community Safety and Wellbeing Planning Table is an overarching umbrella that is aiming to bring together a variety, like the organizations and service providers addressing community safety and wellbeing generally. There had not previously been a crime prevention tape, like subcommittee meeting, even though that was one of the pillars of the plan. And they've started that last quarter, initially with policing partners, crime stoppers and victim services. But there were breakout discussions around the priority areas that fall under crime prevention, which include road safety, drug trafficking and drug-related crimes, human trafficking, trafficking and intimate partner and gender-based violence. The most immediately relevant of those, I think, to Owen Sound's roles and responsibilities is road safety. There are best practices around the design of roads to promote safety that I think we can explore more actively, and the Chair would probably say, that's a great thing for operations. So I flag that for the Chair of that committee. Other notables coming out of that is that it's been hard to explain what the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan is and what the table is and the difference between that as a standalone thing or something that gathers independent organizations to improve the collaboration piece. And so they've crafted, and Alexis, the new coordinator or lead of that table, was actively working on an elevator pitch that they finalized and presented to that meeting, which was that the Community Safety and Wellbeing Planning helps organizations improve the things that keep us healthy, happy and safe. Together, we use research to create solutions focused on education, healthcare, food, housing, income, crime and belonging. It's important that we create a welcoming community where problems are solved before they happen and where different professionals and community members come together to help people now and in the future, end quote. The key messaging being connected to that, also addressing the root causes of complex social problems with partner collaboration, using evidence-informed best practices to inform planning and evaluation, and aligning partner strategic planning, as well as strengthening partnerships to implement collaborative strategies and accomplish shared goals. Any questions?
Not seeing any questions. So we'll go to 11D, which is the Owen Sound Police Services Board meeting, held on November 29th. Anything to report? Counselor Kukureja.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The Police Services Board met on the 29th of November, 2023. And just a few updates that came out of the Police Services Board. As of November 2023, all the bylaws and the policies that have been reviewed over the past couple of months are all now available at the Board Office. And once the Owen Sound Police website is updated and complete, an announcement would be made when the general public can view all the bylaws that would be posted online. Then there were reports from Inspector Bishop that were reviewed, and they covered the criminal investigation, auxiliary unit, community-oriented response, which includes the ongoing investigations that involved three homicides that occurred between July and August. And then reports from Inspector Fluny, which highlighted the frontline patrol, community services, the hours lost during the training, board bylaws and code status. The Police Board also reviewed stats on the record checks that usually come to the Police Department for processing. Based on the stats, checks, a total of 7,796 bulk searches were completed just in October 2023. The wait time is usually within one to two weeks of an individual when they apply for police checks. There were also stats and reports presented from the Owen Sound Emergency Communication Center regarding updates to the NG 911. A step that was taken to improve the communication is a new feedback form, which is not available. And the whole purpose of the form is to better track dispatch-related services. And this is basically done with an intent to improve the flow of information related to Communication Center and NG 911 implementation. Stats were presented on the 911 calls. In October alone, there were 5,664 emergency calls from the 911 phone line, which is about 183 calls per day. And this is a decline of about 9.5% in the volume of calls that were received at the center in the month of September. As of year-to-date, there were around 66,582 emergency 911 calls, which is a 13% increase from last year. No-answer calls were approximately 494 in October. And a total of 5,450 calls were dispatched through the CAD, which is the computer-aided dispatch. So this is all for the Police Services Board. Thank you.
Any questions for Counselor Kukureja? Not seeing any. Or, let's see, we've got nothing further through the consent agenda. Was there any other items? Oh, yeah, I'll go back to Counselor Kukureja again for the River District. Over to you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The River District Board met on November 8th, 2023, and the first thing that we saw was a presentation from Vicky Watson, Senior Manager of BDO Canada. She provided a deputation to the Board respecting the 2022 year-end audit and highlighted the main points. All the information that was presented in the financial statements corresponded to what was presented to the Board as a part of the year-end report in the spring 2023. There was also a presentation from the Supervisor of Environmental Services regarding the garbage management issues in the River District. The main issue associated was access of garbage at the River District and non-compliance with the bag tags, which was followed by a discussion on what are some of the best practices to manage the issue. Prior to the meeting, Member Ron Cole submitted his resignation, and Members Tim Dwyer and Richard Thompson were new members appointed to the Board. That's.
Counselor Farmer.
Through the Chair, I'm curious, specifically in regards to garbage in the River District. Did anyone bring up that? Did anyone bring up that the Maintenance Standards of the Residential Tenancies Act stipulate that landlords need to provide garbage storage and disposal? And per my reading, it looks like dispose of that garbage, Section 45, for those of you Googling at home. That makes me wonder whether landlords of residential tenancies in the River District have been contacted as part of that effort to improve enforcement, because by regulation, it seems to me, admittedly not an expert, that they seem to be the ones with the responsibility for the residential garbage being generated downtown?
I think that was one of the issues that was flagged, that it is the responsibility of the landlords to have the compliance with the garbage, but one of the discussions was that there's no adequate space for them to keep the bins. And the bylaw has been approaching the landlords, and there has been some talks that went on. And there was some data presented that, which was in compliance, said it was improving for better, but over the due course of time, like more compliance is needed to curb the issue, and I can-
Through the chair. That's completely accurate. That's my understanding of the situation as well. Thank you.
Any further questions? Not seeing any. There's a good question. That certainly goes back. There's history on that item as well, going back, I'm thinking 2015, 2016. Operations Committee had several reports actually go through that committee, looking at different alternatives and avenues to be able to attempt to put different initiatives or waste management practices into place. Certainly, we didn't go a different direction, because we've been doing the street-side pickup, but you've raised a good point there. There's certainly been in-depth discussions in the past regarding looking for solutions. Back to you, Councilor Farmer.
Thank you through the chair. My understanding is that the regulations say that landlords need to provide a safe place for storage of garbage, and whether or not that's a dumpster, or whether that's a designated space that then gets, where bags are then emptied out, it strikes me that that is still the landlord's responsibility, especially if we're going with, as it sounds like was decided however long ago, that it's roadside-bagged pickup, that still strikes me as a landlord's responsibility. And if, did we let them off the hook of that at some point in the past? That certainly goes beyond my time here. Are there formal exemptions for that, or are we just looking the other way from what is, it seems to me, like a provincial standard for what landlords must provide?
I think one of the major issues that originated from this report was, it is hard to guess from where the garbage is coming, because usually in the mornings when the garbage is left outside, that was a part of the discussion. Like, some landlords are in compliance, they are aware of it, but then it is hard to know whose garbage is it when it's placed outside without the bag tags. So that is where the major issue originated from that. So if anybody else wants to add, feel free.
Not seeing it. Councilor Kepke, go ahead.
The unfortunate thing is not everybody follows the rules, and it's really difficult for bylaw to go through all of these bags. Some are the commercial tenant, some are the residential tenant, some people in the city just drop their garbage down there for no reason at all, without a tag. So for bylaw, who has to go through the bags to find out who belongs, if they can at all, find out who the garbage belongs to, and then take enforcement from there. So it isn't the easiest thing to do for staff or the River District to monitor, but, I mean, they're doing their best, and with the new person in charge of that area, the supervisor is trying to make inroads by contacting all of the tenants. So it's slowly working.
Yeah, and that's a good question and good point raised. That was a very good report that was presented to the River District as part of that package. And the Operations Committee also had that within their document or their package, so certainly excellent work has been done by staff and continues to be done to flesh out what we can do in the future, moving forward. So we will advance. Was there any further questions to anything within the consent agenda? Not seeing any. We are into Item 12. We have two sets of minutes with recommendations for approval this evening. Look to my left to Councilor Kukrajna for the Community Services Committee meeting.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The Community Services Committee met on December 13, 2023. There was a deputation that was presented by the Junior Planner and Heritage Coordinator regarding overview of the changes that was made to the Ontario Heritage Act under Bill 23, and the work completed by staff in response to the changes. There was also a report presented by the Manager of Arena and Operations regarding hydro usage at the Julie MacArthur Recreational Centre and Beashore Community Centre. The report highlighted the reduced usage, reduced budget, and large reduction in the greenhouse gas emissions with the installation of the new light fixtures. There was a report presented by Director and Chief Curator of Tom Thompson Art Gallery regarding tourism and cultural updates for the month of December, and a report regarding the Harrison Park Master Plan, and a report from the Tree Inventory Specialist regarding the tree inventory updates about the trees in Owen Sound. Last was a report from the Chief Building Official regarding update to the fence bylaw. So the fence, based on this report, the bylaw needed an update, as there are no current regulations for a maximum height of a fence in the city. So at this time, residents, the issue was residents installing fences which were higher from eight to 10 feet high, and the permitted limit is six feet. So that was the report, last one, and with that, that's it.
You've been busy this evening. Any questions for Councilor Kukrajna? Not seeing any. All those in favor? Oh, just, I'll go back to you to put the motion on the floor.
With that, I make the motion to move the bits of the Committee Services meeting.
And all those in favor of those recommendations being approved? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And over to Councilor Kepke to the Operations Committee meeting.
Thank you. Operations Committee meeting of December 14, 2023. First item was streetlight policy. The formalization of the city's streetlight policy embraces infrastructure principles regarding dark-skY compliant lighting, which is a standard that reduces the impact of nighttime light emissions on human health, wildlife, and light pollution. The policy also lays out a formal process for requesting new streetlights. Next item is household hazardous waste rates for municipal partners. Committee recommends council approve increase to the per-vehicle charge to participating municipalities, with the 2024 rate being $60 per vehicle. Committee is also recommending that staff be directed to bring forward a bylaw to execute a 224 hazardous and special productions agreement with Georgian Bluffs, Grey Highlands, Meaford, and Chatsworth. In 2023, more than 47,000 kilograms of hazardous and unique products were collected, and more than 17,000 liters of motor oil were collected. Next item, curbside waste management RFP and possible service expansion of green bin. Committee are recommending council approve the extension of the current contract for the second one-year optional extension, while staff finalizes the waste management RFP by April 15, 2024, to procure the new waste contract, including organic collection. Process review and business plan for the Leaf and Yard Waste Compost Site. Council-approved, committee-approved recommendations to set the seasonal hours of operation at the Leaf and Yard Waste Compost Site to open on the first Monday of April each year and close on December 1st, with the re-opening taking place December 27 to the third Monday in January to allow for Christmas tree drop-off. Security at this site will continue periodically from opening until after the Thanksgiving weekend to ensure only authorized residents and registered businesses use the site. Usage of the site by residents of Georgian Bluffs and Meaford will continue, with financial contributions remaining at $26,000 a year each. Winter Storm Emergency Response Plan amendments. Staff presented amendments to the Winter Storm Emergency Response Plan with revisions that were primarily house chemical amendments to clarify roles and responsibilities, ensure the storm categories more closely reflect the local weather pattern, and integrate minimum maintenance standards and significant weather events. Winter Operation Plan and Level of Service. Staff presented potential opportunities for streamlining and further investigation regarding the Winter Operations Plan and Level of Service. Some areas where further data collection will take place for future analysis are the speed column used in establishing the maintenance level classification, consideration of traffic volumes, and tracking winter control versus weather data. And with that, your worship, I'll move the approval of the minutes and these recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Kepke. Councilor Farmer?
Through the chair, just a question of clarification around the waste management contract. Is the goal to issue an RFP by April 15th, or to have secured, like, to issued and already chosen a provider by that time?
Through Deputy Mayor Gregg to Councilor Farmer. What ended up happening with that report was that staff committed to presenting a subsequent report, like a follow-up report. So there is also a related report on that coming to the upcoming Operations Committee meeting this week, and that will more further fine-tune what we intend to include in the Terms of Reference for the RFP, for the waste contract. Yep, sorry, it is to issue it, yeah. We haven't finished drafting the Terms of Reference yet. We're waiting for agreement from committee and council before we finalize those things. So we expect that the contract would be ready to, like, we would enter into a contract with a contractor, hopefully in April-ish, I think, by the, what's his name?
June.
Oh, sorry, June or July. By the time the tendering, or sorry, the procurement process would have a chance to run its course, it would be mid-year by the time a contract would be awarded.
Any further questions? Not seeing any. All those in favor of those recommendations being approved? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. So Item 13 is matters postponed, of which tonight we have none. Item 14 is motions for which notice was previously given. There are no motions this evening. Item 15, discussion of additional business. Councilor Farmer?
Thanks to the Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Last week, the Health Unit released an overdose alert on January 11th after multiple non-fatal overdoses over just a couple of days. The alert is in effect until January 18th and is related to toxic lime-green fentanyl. One of the things that makes the drug supply more, yeah, that makes having a toxic drug supply more dangerous is also the stigma around using, and they remind folks that if you or someone you know uses drugs, just make sure you don't use alone, to call the National Overdose Response Service if you are going to use alone. But it's also, I think, a good idea if you operate a business, if you've got folks around your place of work or home, like, have naloxone. That's free, and it saves lives. So I wanted to highlight that. I also wanted to highlight that the stats for both OSHA and the Salvation Army show that there's growing precarity in people's lives. Need was up over the holiday season. The Salvation Army saw an increase of 600 people signing up to receive Christmas food assistance this year, up to 1,700 from just 1,100 last year. And I wanted to flag, well, say thanks to OSHA and just flag that they served 146,625 meals in 2023, and that was compared to only 123,600 and change in 2022, so up 23,000 meals. Yeah, so folks need us to, folks who are suffering and living precariously, and they need us to make sure that we're providing what they need to build connection and help those needs be met, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Farmer, for flagging a couple of those items, too, because certainly the community is very thankful to the work and support of the individuals volunteering at facilities like OSHA. And it's kind of warrants, just noting within the final approvals tonight within the business license was the OSHA located on 263 10th Street, and that building certainly underwent quite the renovation, and certainly then, when you're traveling through the community, you know, it's a real face to the valuable contribution that that organization puts forth in the community. So, Councilor Farmer?
Thank you, with support through our CIP.
Yeah, so any other items of additional business? Not seeing, there is none. Item 16, motion that committee of the whole rise and report.
Moved by myself that the committee of the whole rise and report.
All those in favor? Carried unanimously? Item 18, notices of motion. Councilor Farmer? Sorry, Councilor Middleborough is already ready to speak. Item 17, motion to adopt proceedings in committee of the whole. Councilor Middleborough?
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Merton, that the action taken in committee of the whole in considering public meetings, deputations and presentations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports of city staff, consent agenda, committee minutes, matters postponed, motions for which notice was previously given, and additional business be confirmed by this council.
Thank you for catching that. That'd be a bad motion to miss. That would waste the last 45 minutes of work. All those in favor of that being approved? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. And now, Item 18, notices of motion. Councilor Farmer?
Thank you through the Deputy Mayor. I will be bringing the following motion to the next council meeting. Whereas October 2024 is the midpoint in the current term of council, and whereas there has not been a town hall-style meeting so far this council term, therefore be it resolved that City Council direct staff to schedule a special council meeting for October 2024 to serve as a forum for public questions and suggestions relating to city operations and governance, that this meeting take place in a location with a larger seating capacity than the council chambers, and with a foyer where information tables can be set up to raise awareness about city departments and initiatives, as well as community services and agencies should they choose to participate. And for that, I will need a secondar, and I believe Councilor Merton is on deck.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Farmer. Councilor Merton, will you second?
Yes, I will support that motion.
All right, thank you. So we've got that on the forthcoming agenda. Item 19 is motion to move into closed session. We have no closed session items before us tonight, so we are down to Item 21, which is the bylaws.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Gregg. Bylaws listed for approval on tonight's agenda include the confirmatory bylaw, a bylaw to appoint or amend terms of office for members and established boards and committees, a bylaw to provide for an interim levy for 2024 for all property classes, a bylaw to adopt the community engagement policy, a bylaw to execute an agreement with Trade Services Group Inc. respecting traffic signal maintenance, a bylaw to execute a financial incentive program agreement with Berries Construction and Insulation respecting facade and structural improvement grant, a bylaw to amend the municipal accommodation tax bylaw to add quarterly filing for certain accommodation providers, a bylaw to amend the committee of adjustment bylaw to appoint the committee to act as the short-term rental appeals committee, and a bylaw to amend the fees and charges bylaw to increase bag tag fees.
And Councilor Kepke?
I would request that bylaw 2009 be dealt with separately and let a recorded vote take place.
Councilor Middleborough?
Moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Merton that bylaws number 2024, 001, 002, 003, 004, 005, 006, 007, and 008 be passed and enacted.
And all those in favor? And all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously? And that leaves us with bylaw number 2024-009. I'd be looking for a mover to put that on the floor. Councillor Farmer.
I so move the motion.
And do I have a seconder? Councillor Hamley so seconded? And that was an ask for a recorded vote as well. Councillor Farmer?
So for full transparency, this is the bylaw that would raise the bag tag fee. In the report that we got at budget time, it was clear that the cost for the service, so the, the cost that we are getting from the contractor, has risen by a factor of three since 2011, when these fees were in place. And we were presented at that time with a choice between recovering an increasing portion of that cost through bag tags, or shifting the cost for the garbage production and disposal onto the tax base of the, the people of Owen Sound. I think that we have an option here to not shift the responsibility for the cost of disposing of garbage onto our neighbors, and to, and to not misrepresent the choice ahead in, in front of us right now by saying that we will make garbage cheaper. We are making the visit by increasing the garbage bag tag cost, we're making the cost of that service visible to the people who are producing garbage. We are going to, as a community, we are paying for this garbage one way or another. We are either paying it through your property tax bill, which is what we'll be doing if this motion fails, or we'll be doing it by purchasing bag tags to specifically apply to the garbage that we ourselves are creating. And I think that it's really important that we be fully transparent in what the options are at this moment as we, as we vote on this. So it's, do we pay it upfront? Is the people producing it? Or do we, as a council, shift the cost of the garbage produced in Owen Sound disproportionately onto the property taxes of the people of Owen Sound? And for that reason, I'm happy to, to move this motion, and I will be voting for it.
Councillor Keppi?
Thank you. I will not be voting in favor of this motion. I believe that people don't get enough for their taxes as it is, and if this goes into the tax base, so be it. People are paying enough with their taxes and their bag tags and everything else, and I will remain at this service being provided by the city.
I see Councillor Merton's hand in the air. I'll go to Councillor Merton next.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Farmer had mentioned the issue of transparency, and that's an important principle that we all follow. Council was provided an impact analysis on what happened when bag tag prices increased, and council had the opportunity to review that. I do not believe that was shared with the public. And that is a piece of information I believe our public need to be aware of, that tracked what happened with the financial status, the bag tag sales, and it went back to 2010, so that we, we make decisions based on information and evidence. Should we raise, historically, there have been changes, and it takes time to catch up when prices do increase. So ultimately, we either ask our constituents to pay an increased cost in a bag tag and/or if the bag tag sales go down, then the tax base obviously has to pick up the difference. I believe that the issue of bag tags and is part of the larger issue about, is this a core service? And I, I concur with Councillor Keppi around, is it time that we relook again at the principles behind waste management being part of a core service? We are in the middle of budget deliberations. You know, just because we've always done it this way doesn't mean we should continue to do it this way. And maybe it is time that we really dig in a little deeper around the principles about core services. What is nice to have versus what do we need to have, and what may need to change in our budget to be able to address these issues? I will not be supporting the motion. I will be voting opposed.
And seeing no other individuals with their hands in the air, I would like to vacate the chair, so, and speak to the motion on the floor. So I'll turn the chair over to Councillor Middleborough.
You can go ahead.
Being that it's a recorded vote, I'd just like to share my comments. I will vote against the passage of the bylaws as presented. I wasn't comfortable with the level of discussion that occurred at budget in arriving at the I think I've received a significant amount of correspondence from the public who are not comfortable with council raising the bag tag fee to $3.50 this year. I think immediately we just created a surplus in last year's department by doing so, and subsequently probably created a deficit for 2024, or created a financial matter which we're going to have to recognize, because those who did have the means to be able to afford a $1 increase in their fees probably ran out and purchased $50 or $100 or $150 of bag tags last December. And I would like to share, because I was asked to share this, by a resident in Owen Sound. Last February, I was diagnosed with a serial, serious medical condition. I am now required to perform dialysis at my home four times weekly. Unfortunately, this process creates an abundance of waste. These one-time-use materials are, for safety reasons, disposed of following each treatment as they transfer my blood. The result is an increase, about double the amount in the waste I now produce. My wife and I are careful to take advantage of the municipality's recycling and cardboard programs and do our part to reduce waste in other ways. As someone with a legitimate need for increased waste, I do feel I am being unfairly targeted by council's waste tax. It's described, in council's words, it has been described as an increase, as targeting those who can afford to create the most waste. I do not feel I should be required to pay a 40% increase in my garbage collection process due to a medical condition beyond my control that I have been inflicted with. I was asked to share that example. That reaffirms my position, so I will be voting against it. Thanks.
Would you like to speak? Sure. Sinne first? Sinne.
Through you, Madam Chair. With the increase in, and I totally agree with Deputy Mayor Greg, when we did receive a lot of calls from our concerned citizens, and with an increase of $1 tag, we are not increasing any service. We are not picking up garbage every week. The comparison that we had with the other municipalities, there, the first garbage tag, bag was picked up free of cost, and there was a charge on the second garbage bag. So we, as a municipality, we are not doing that, but we are just adding more. And when I drive around the town, I do see people recycling. The whole intent of the garbage tag was to encourage people to recycle, and I think that everybody is doing. So I find, like, $3.50 is a lot, where people are struggling for food. Here, we are talking about living wage, we are talking about increasing minimum wage, and at the same time, we are increasing our garbage tax to a dollar, which would impact a lot of our folks, so I would be voting against the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Farmer?
Thank you, through the acting chair. I've been, I have similarly received correspondence, spoken to the, the individual that emailed you there. And it's, it's hard when we see the cost of bag tags upfront, we know that we're paying for it that way. But we are paying for this either way. We are not making the cost of this contract cheaper by shifting how we pay for it from the pocket of bag tags to the pocket of property taxes. And I'm absolutely sympathetic to the, the comments that have been made around particularly people who are struggling financially, and bag tags as what I think is part of every factor of our lives that is becoming more expensive. If council's intention was specifically to provide or address the impact of that service on people who are struggling financially, then we have a variety of mechanisms that we have not talked about that we, that we could use to particularly put bag tags in the hands of those people. We could provide a certain amount to the, to OSHA and to the Salvation Army for distribution to people who are, by accessing those services, clearly in financial need. We could, similarly to the mechanism that's now in place, where people who are living on Ontario Works or on ODSP can come to the counter downstairs and get a subsidized bus pass with provincially recognized documentation that shows that they are in, that, that financial need, that could make $2.50 bag tags available at the front desk. There are other options to address, if we are motivated by the idea that there is suffering in this community that is financial, that people need help with, there are options that we could, we could explore to particularly ease that burden without needing to spread that evenly across the entire population by upfront, by shifting that to the property taxes. I'm also, I would, I'm curious if staff would have an answer at the drop of a hat for what this would then add to the necessary tax increase? Because there's, there's, voting against this now means that we are also voting for an increase in the tax levy, because this money has to come from somewhere. And again, I'm voting for it. Thank you for the, to the acting chair, but maybe that's a question for staff.
Councillor Keppi? Do you, do you want to answer, Kate? Sure.
It would make the difference of about $100,000, adding back to the tax rate, which is about the equivalent of a 0.3%, or 30, sorry, a 0.3% increase.
Councillor Keppi?
Just a clarification on the difference of this. A bag tag increase of a dollar goes to everyone who puts out garbage. A bag tag interest, or increase in the tax base goes to the property tax owner, or the people who pay property tax, property owners. It's the people who are paying rent that can hardly afford to pay their rent, that can't afford to pay for an extra dollar to a bag tag.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, then we can move ahead with a recorded vote.
Councillor Farmer?
In favor?
Councillor Hamley?
In favor?
Councillor Keppi?
Opposed.
Councillor Kukrajja?
Opposed.
Councillor Merton?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Greg?
Opposed.
Councillor Middleborough?
Opposed.
The resolution is defeated, with two in favor and five opposed.
Okay, thank you for that. And in terms of where that leaves us, Councillor Farmer correctly noted the budget implications of this decision, but we have still not passed the 2024 budget. We have further budget work ahead of us yet. So what tonight just means is that we did not execute the bylaw to increase the bag tag fees to $3.50. So I, the next item at this time is item 22, which is adjournment. So at 6:34, we are adjourned.
Health and safety issue. And those were things we had to bring to the attention of people in Toronto who make those decisions, that especially in a rural context, it's not just water, it's, it's a life-sustaining piece as well. So we went and, and got this ban put in place, so that, that kicks on November 15th every year. People do need to be reconnected, they can be disconnected May 1st as well. And during the pandemic in 2020, when people lost all their jobs, you know, we had SERB, we went and said, you know, we're having trouble processing applications for assistance for utilities, you gotta stop the disconnections. And they went into July, I think it was the end of July, before they, I think, settled down enough, and we were out of lockdown that disconnections could happen again.
That's amazing. Can you tell me what was the pivotal moment, besides being seven and not allowed into the cockpit of the airplane, that inspired you actually to become more engaged in social and community issues?
I don't know if there's a burning bush moment in my life. You know, it's frog in boiling water of, again, and going back to that somebody, and just being egotistically blind to barriers of, you know, you can't do that, there's nothing you can do about that, well, why can't we? There was a project I did at the Banff Leadership Centre in 2017. I got to go for a month to the Leadership Centre in Banff around systems change. And that was very pivotal of being in a room with other, we call ourselves disruptive leaders, and looking at things that, from a different way. So I guess actually there was a moment around disruptive leadership. And I was driving to Timmins, my daughter lives in Timmins, and I was listening to NPR podcasts, Go Public Radio, and it was about disruptive leadership. And it was the first time I'd heard that phrase. And it was about, it was Indian engineers going into Africa to teach the women how to install the solar panels to give electricity to the villages. And they used the women, because the women used it for community, whereas if they had given the resources to the men, the men would have put price tags on it all. So they empowered the women of the villages, and these were the grandmothers, and they taught them all how to be solar power engineers. And it disrupted that system on so many levels. And I just was driving, thinking, I've found my people. I know who I am now. I'm a disruptive leader. And I went in my LinkedIn profile and went disruptive leader. Because sometimes, you know, I just gotta get in and, and make a mess, and be there to help clean it up, but at the same time, let's stop, you know, doing things the same way. You know, we did that with the pandemic.
Yeah, it forces people to start to talk, though, when you do that, though. It forces people to look at things differently. I love that term. I love it. Disruptive leader. That's fabulous. Is that what made you want to engage in, like, so in 2016 and 2018, you, you got more involved in the municipal and the provincial level? Is that one of the reasons why you wanted to do that, or?
Yeah, I wanted to do more, and I thought that was the way I could possibly do more. I wasn't successful in, in either attempt, but learned a lot about myself through both efforts, and as well, learned a lot about the system. And after 2018, I realized I could do more on the outside than I could on the inside. I learned how rigid our political structures are, especially when you got into partisanship. So even if you had the right idea and the right program and the right resources, if it didn't fit that political box, it would go nowhere. And that was really shocking, to realize the rigidity of that. And that was really shocking to realize the rigidity of that system. And I've had a lot of people that have come up to me and said over the years, you know, I'm really sorry you didn't get in, but I'm also really glad you didn't get in.
Well, that makes sense. What you've done within the community itself is just fantastic. And I personally love sitting in a room with you and talking because it's just so, it's always, I always walk away with an aha moment, I have to tell you that, I love it. So what were the main influences in your life? You mentioned your parents being feminists, and I think that's amazing, props, Go Dad. What other things were, who else were main influences in your life?
So there were definitely leaders in Canada that I looked up to. You know, Sheila Cops comes to mind because I was a teenager in the 80s and, you know, my dad was an avid news watcher. And he didn't really like her as the person, but he liked how she approached things, how she stood up to misogyny in the House of Parliament. You know, Crosby, Soros was one of the things, you know, she wrote the book, Nobody's Baby. You know, and he would point her out to me and say, you know, look what she can do, look what she's standing up to. And as well, you know, Bruce Power wasn't Bruce Power at the time, as Bruce Newkiller. But they had such a strong emphasis around women and Newkiller even then, you know, it's very strong now, but even in the 80s. So when I was a girl guide, you know, we would do first aid and we would get trainers from the Newkiller industry that would come and help us out. And they were just so strong, supportive of women getting involved in things and being knowledgeable and doing non-traditional things. And it just created that culture and environment that, you know, don't, don't let anybody hold you back, you can do this. So there's a lot of people that have come and gone into my life, you know, at those right moments, at the right time of, you know, connecting and saying, you know, let me get you through to the next thing, let me help you work this out.
That's awesome. Begin, so starting in November, this will be the start of your 20th year as the Executive Director for the United Way. Congratulations. What is, did you ever think you would be this long with?
No, honestly, every job I had ever had before was about five years. And either I chose to transition to something else, or they chose for me to transition to something else that happens. And so I just thought life was kind of a five-year cycle. And when I hit years six and seven here, I was like, oh, I could stay here, you know? And then after doing the provincial run in 18, I'm like, you know what? I'm gonna finish it out. I got, you know, seven, eight years before I have to retire, or I could retire. Yeah, I'm gonna stick it out. Sidney Meisner, who was the Executive Director of Gray County CAS for 30 years, went to her retirement party and it's like, you know, I can be at one organisation, you don't always have to be moving to the next thing. And so, yeah, I was like, I can do this, I can stay here and continue as long as everybody will have me to do what I do.
What do you love the most about the position with the United Way and what the United Way does for the community?
My favorite piece is just putting it out to the community and saying, this is what's going on, this is what we need help with. And the community goes, okay, we on it. Is community engagement, I spent some time this week with folks from Bruce County brainstorming around homelessness issues and just, you know, out of the box, working with the Safe Communities Committee up the Bruce Peninsula around stunt driving, which is very different than, you know, the normal day-to-day work of the United Way. But by engaging the community, we create a change. You know, and it's that kind of piece of, when you get that opportunity on a Friday to look back on the week and go, okay, what went well, what didn't go well, what could have been better, and what did we win? Where are the wins today? And what a joy it is. And I just, I really enjoy people.
That's excellent. That's awesome. So what have you learned about yourself on your journey so far?
Patience. And the small wins and to really pay attention to the small wins because everything is a step in the right direction. And, you know, on that disconnection ban, it was meeting the right people, talking to the vice presidents of various corporations and companies, you know, getting the data together and really chunking out an issue rather than just looking at the whole thing as a big piece of what small steps can we take?
That's cool. So I just, I guess I want to say you did touch a little bit on you working with Bruce County with the homeless, and we have noticed there's an increase of homelessness in the area. Is there anything you would like to let us as a community know about the homelessness issue, what's working, what's not working, how we, we as a community can help engage and support those vulnerable within the community? Is there something you'd want to touch base on that a little bit?
The big thing we want people to understand is this is an income issue. It goes the same for food insecurity, so people who don't have enough food to eat. It's all an income issue. It's not a budgeting issue, it is not a lifestyles choices issue, this is strictly an income issue. So we need to talk about how much people on ODSP are getting, Ontario Disability Program, how much, you know, other people on other disability payments are getting, WSIB, all of those things. Ontario Works is ridiculously low in terms of giving people enough money. When a room rental is $1,500, how do you even manage? And when we look at and understand, you know, the investment strategy behind housing now, because interest rates were so low, it was the only thing that was increasing in value was housing. So all the investment companies got behind buying up the housing, the pandemic, outmigration from urban, all of those things impacting the cost of housing, and income has not risen with it. So when we look at people with mental health challenges, with general health challenges, you know, we have seniors that are living in tents because they can't afford housing, it's an income issue. You know, people will say, oh, you know, they just need to learn to budget better. How do you budget on $1,600 a month, which is what a senior has? How do you budget on $1,200, which is what somebody on disability gets? That's what we need to understand, the real core issue behind it. Because that's what we need to address before we can start looking. Because studies have been done that people who become unhoused without a mental health issue, within three months have one, be it, you know, depression, be it anxiety, you don't sleep, you're always trying to sleep with one eye open. And we know sleep is so, that good, deep sleep is so important to refreshing your brain and keeping going and doing everything on a day-to-day basis. So if you're sleeping with one eye open because raccoons or, you know, humans, whoever is outside your tent, if you're lucky enough to have a tent, you're not sleeping. And so it's, it's just, you know, how do you dig yourself out of that situation? And, you know, I've read recently a pile of stories of people who had businesses in the pandemic and because of the pandemic, lost them and ended up living in cars. And, and, you know, that's who's homeless, as well as those with health challenges.
Yeah. For those of us that want to become more engaged and want to help, where would we start? What would you?
So some of the easy things to do is to sign up to get information from the Poverty Task Force. We funnel all of our programs and information through Jill Lombach and that team, she's a United Way employee. And they can stay on top of, because we gather information based on various themes, we have monthly meetings, so, you know, the public's welcome to attend. Be educated, you know, understand what, you know, the city is doing, understand what the counties are doing. When there is a call out for engagement, go and learn about something. Meetings around Bayview or whatever Bayview is going to be called, go and understand what it is. You know, I was in a meeting and somebody referred to it as a halfway house, and I was like, whoa. You know, and I, that was it, straw camel. I interrupted and said, excuse me, it is a healthcare facility. It has nothing to do with the corrections system in any way, shape or form. Do not call it that. And, you know, the person apologized, they were trying to be a little dramatic, and I was like, no, learn what it is, be factual about it. You can still not want it in your backyard, but be factual about it.
That's, that's good advice. Where can one go to learn more about it, though? Like, where can, where? Because I know a lot of us, which is unfortunate to say, some of us do get our news feed from social media, and we now can't do that. Where would you suggest we can go to learn more about what's happening?
So if you want to know more about the Bayview, you can visit the hospital's website. There are information, there are public meetings coming up. Join your local chamber, because they keep you up to date on everything, you know, can't go without saying that, absolutely. Give us a shout, ask, you know, people call and just ask us questions, absolutely. Reach out to Jill, there's definitely flyers around what it is and how it's working. Yeah, don't rely on, especially now we can't add links to, to news articles, so go check local news websites every day, see what everybody is talking about, what the news of the day is, is be more proactive in learning. And question, ask questions, because what you end up with is, well, I heard this, and it's like, no, that's not quite true, or really, let me check into that. And I will often reach back out to the hospital and go, okay, somebody just told me this. And it's like, it's not, I don't want to say it's a half-truth in that it's kind of fake news and all that dramatic, but it's just a misunderstanding. And you get clarification on, okay, this is what this is.
Yeah, I think that sometimes there can be a lot of misunderstandings. So you're right, to do your own research is really important, especially with issues that you're passionate about. You touched base a little bit on the Gray Bruce, oh, sorry, the Bruce Gray Poverty Task Force. Can you tell me a little bit about that and what services that they offer for those of us that don't know?
So this is a planning table, so there's no frontline services through this table. So what the Task Force is, is well over 50 organisations that have an interest in or a connection to people living low income or living with barriers to accessing services. So it's an information gathering, it's a planning table. We'll take an issue at a higher level rather than, you know, so if we talk about food insecurity, we don't just say, okay, the food bank is out of craft dinner, so we need more craft dinner. We may say that, but we will also say food insecurity is an income issue. We need fresh produce as well as craft dinner, you know, because craft dinner once a week, yeah, why not? Craft dinner every night, that's not good. That's not nutrition. So, you know, what are the other issues that go along with it? And making those connections. So when we, you know, see an issue bubbling up and we're like, okay, we're missing a partner here. There's an organisation that knows more about this than, than anybody around the table, let's bring them in, let's get them connected. And then we can also share information as well, because some organisations just don't have, like, they don't have fundraising capacity, they don't have community education capacity. You know, we've seen a huge increase in domestic violence with the pandemic and all the pressures there. But the women shelters are just so busy coping with it, they're not able to come out and say that and do a public education campaign around, you know, this is a serious issue that we need to talk about and address as a community. So that's where the Poverty Task Force can say, okay, this is what's going on, and this impacts homelessness as well. Because the partner, the victim partner has to leave, you know, and the perpetrator may be in jail, so there may be an income impact as well. And then if there's nowhere safe for that person to go and set up new housing, you know, often they have to return because, well, I'm six weeks or in the shelter or up, you know, there's nowhere else for me to go without leaving the community, so I may as well go back because at least I had money and I could feed my kids.
For those that want to help, but the only way they know how is to donate, which is fabulous, where would you, or what organisations would you say benefit the most from the donations that help that wide range of people in need?
Everybody. So there's a lot of niche, so you've got the shelters that do domestic violence and violence against women, always need donations. The best thing to do with any donation is an unrestricted donation. So we at the United Way, we have backpacks, we have utilities, we have the SOS project. And what we would do with an unrestricted fund is back those up. So if you donate to utilities, it only stays in the utility pot. If you only donate to backpacks, it helps pay for all that backpack stuff, which is great, we need that. But an unrestricted funds allow us to move it from programme to programme. So, you know, every once in a while, a corporation will come along and go, hey, great job, you know, here's $10,000. And I was like, all right, that's good. And that programme's covered now for, for a couple of months. And we can shift funds between. So for every charity, an unrestricted fund, our food banks can go shopping when they have cash, you know, stuff, stuff the ambulance, stuff the cruiser, all of those things are great because it helps have a conversation in the community and it does fill the shelves. But at the same time, when you give cash to a charity, it enables them to go and bulk purchase. So, you know, we can bulk purchase socks, you know, it's 75 cents a sock versus going in and buying them at the store level at $7 a sock or $3 a sock. So for charities, that unrestricted fund is so important. It also helps pay for staff. You know, people always talk about, oh, I wanted to go to frontline help. Well, you know, staff are the frontline help. You know, when you have a utility programme manager, such as we do, you know, they come in with one concern and go out with five applications to all the other programmes. They may go out with a good food box token, so they have fresh food, because we can look at the big picture, what's going on in somebody's life and say, hey, let's get you connected to all the other supports out there. So, you know, making a donation is the most important thing, and an unrestricted donation to your favourite charity is the most impactful way in the community.
I think that's great. I don't think a lot of people realise that. So I think, thank you for sharing that. I wanted to touch a little bit on 211, because not a lot of people know about 211. So can you please, like you mentioned, the support services all in one place, so can you please tell us a little bit about 211?
So we've had 211 for 12, maybe 13 years, I'd have to double check. In our community, 211 is a phone number. At its most simple, it's a phone number. There are staff 24 hours a day that answer the phone. You go into a bit of a triage, English, French. It is also our homelessness intake. So for Gray Bruce, if you're calling from Gray Bruce, it'll ask if you're calling about emergency housing because you need a motel room because you're homeless. So, you know, you got to get through the little tree and then you can talk to somebody. And it's a database of all human services information for Bruce and Gray and Ontario and Canada now, thanks to, you know, the pandemic and federal funding helped us roll it out to the other provinces that we weren't there. It is the United Way of Canada project, so it is one of our pieces, but it's for everybody and anybody. It carries a list of all the free meal programmes, be it frozen or hot meals, so that Thursday lunch in Chesley that happens every week as a hot lunch versus the St Aidan's frozen meal programme. It can get you connected to all those resources. If there isn't a local service, for example, so we don't have a John Howard or Elizabeth Fry Society to help people coming out of incarceration navigate the system, but there's one in Barry and there's one in Kitchener-Waddelloo, and they're more than happy to talk to people. So you can call, you can also call and say, hey, I have a grandparent or a child in Kingston and I need help with whatever, I want to get them some PSW help, or I want them to connect to a social event, you know, coffee with, like, friends, is there anything in Kingston? And you can call from Gray Bruce and they will give you Kingston information or wherever.
Wow, that's, what a great service that, I don't think enough people know about. So Francesca, you've given so much for us to learn and explore and do our own research today, I can't thank you enough. What advice would you give someone who's trying to find their voice?
Just use it. It's like, it's like exercise. You know what? The more you use it, the stronger you get. And don't let somebody shush you.
Oh, I love that. Thank you so much for joining me today on her story. I'd like to end the programme by encouraging you to get involved in your community and find the spark that ignites you on your path to create your own story. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Thanks, Francesca.
Thank you.
Connect with us by visiting our website or email us at comments@rogersTV.com.
Every year, dozens of Canadians are killed or seriously injured because they take risks around railway tracks. Talk to your loved ones about rail safety. Visit StopTrackTragedies.ca.
These guys are the best, that's their whole job.
Get me home to my baby, I promise.
We do not have a lot of time, let's go, let's go, let's go!
I'm here, we're in this together.
Chicago Wednesday, new season's premiere, January 17th, on City TV or streaming on City TV+.
You're watching Rogers TV.
You're watching Rogers TV. This program is brought to you by Ignite TV. Now you're in command. Visit Rogers.com for more details. The opinions expressed in the following programs are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect those of Rogers Cable or Rogers TV.
Hi, and welcome to Politically Speaking. I'm David Shearman. My guest today is the Honorable Lisa Thompson, who is the MPP for Huron-Bruce, but also the Minister of Agriculture. And, uh, this is part of our Concarden series, so it's always a pleasure to have, uh, expand our horizons a little bit and to welcome Lisa to Politically Speaking. Good to have you with us today.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to join you, Dave.
Now, uh, I gotta ask, what's the weather there? Is it snowing yet?
You know what? Driving home from Toronto last night, oh, around 11 o'clock, there was snow in the air. And I will say, we do have snow in our farmyard this morning, but it's just a skiff, nothing to worry about.
Oh, that's good. That's good. Cause I'm over, I'm over in Gray County and we've seen light flurries, but, uh, hey, as we are taping this, it's coming, it's coming.
Well, we need to get ready for Santa Claus, too.
Very true. And very, then actually that's a good reason for me to plug the, the Santa Claus parades that, that, uh, are happening all across Gray Bruce. Um, I was just, uh, speaking to our producer and he was saying that, while I'm going to be covering the Meaford Parade, he'll be down doing it at the Concarden Parade.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah, fortunately I can't be at the Concarden Parade this year because we have so many that fall on the same evening. But, uh, I was in Concarden last Friday evening to kick off the reopening of the main street. And, uh, the Christmas season is just absolutely, um, alive and well in Concarden. They did a, a wonderful job reopening the main street in time for people to get downtown and, and shop for Christmas.
It's always a real blessing, everyone says, when construction season is finally finished.
Yes, yes. And, uh, you know, it's an interesting, it's a generational, uh, experience that, that, uh, was experienced in Concarden this past summer because, uh, you know, we had to rework the infrastructure. And so now they've got a main street that's second to none for generations to enjoy.
And part of that, if I, if I know the, the way that the funding works is there's, the province has a hand in that funding, does it not?
Well, yes, yes, we certainly help with infrastructure reconstruction. But in particular, what was special for me that evening last Friday was that my Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs has a funding program called Rural Economic Development. And we presented to the municipality and the community of Concarden, if you will, a, a check for over a hundred and $20,000 to help revitalize their main street. And that funding will be going towards new benches and, and dressing up the main street in time for summer next year.
Well, that's great. That's great. It's always good to see the street for not just the pavement, but the street furniture.
Exactly. Yeah. And, uh, you know, I know some guys that have some classic cars around the Teaswater area where I'm from, and they're really looking forward to that car show coming back to the main street of Concarden next year.
That's one of the popular things across Gray Bruce are, um, car shows. That, that's, it seems like there, in the summer at least, there isn't a night that there isn't a car show going on somewhere.
Yeah, and it's fantastic. Uh, truth, you know, my husband has, uh, an old car that he loves to get out in it. It gives people a reason to, to sign up the car and go and have a good visit with friends.
To be sure. Absolutely. There's a whole social aspect to it and it's, uh, it's also a great tourist draw. Well, I've noticed that we could, we get people from all over coming to the, the, uh, the, uh, various car shows.
Yeah, a hundred percent. I agree with that. And you're right, it's all across Gray Bruce and, uh, it's fun seeing, you know, sometimes I'm on the road for work, a certain hour on a Friday or Saturday evening, and you just see lines of classic cars coming from somewhere. And it makes me smile because they've been out and about supporting a particular community.
Absolutely, absolutely. And speaking of, of new communities or investing in communities, hydrogen is a big, big, um, cutting edge for energy self-sufficiency. And there's been some developments over in, in Port Elgin and Godrich around, uh, hydrogen.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, I, I really appreciate the leadership that we see from Minister Todd Smith as we drive a low-carbon hydrogen strategy forward. And, uh, the nice thing is here in Gray Bruce, you know, we have a leader in Bruce Power. And, uh, I, I have to tell you, I've heard value spoke about hydrogen for some time from the leadership at Bruce Power. And here we are, uh, moving forward, leading around the world. And right here at home, we have companies moving forward with local solutions and, and opportunities to make a difference. And again, I'm going to use that phrase, lead by example. We have Carlson Energy Solutions in the Concarden-Tiverton area, as well as Capital Power to the south in the, just north of Godrich.
And then there's, there's hydrogen optimized over here in Gray County, you know, in Sound, and there's, there's lots, I mean, and, and that, curiously enough, is Canadian technology. So it's, are, are we becoming an energy power?
We are. And, you know, not only do we have Bruce Power in the region, the largest clean energy solution in terms of the largest nuclear generation station in the world. But honest to goodness, we are, um, moving forward under the leadership of our government. And I will share with you that countries around the world are coming to Ontario to see how we're doing things. And they're reviewing and, and really getting engaged to understand the technologies that are being, being developed right here at home, as you said, in Ontario. And the Minister of Energy is working with partners around the world to embrace what we, for all intents and purposes, have embraced and started right here at home in Gray County and Bruce County.
Sure, sure now.
I'm confident in saying that because I have to tell you, there'll be exciting news coming out of the Ministry of Energy next week. And I'll just leave it at that. I don't want to trump my friend Todd Smith. But, uh, again, you'll, my comments that I've just shared will make more sense during the week of, what is it, November 27th, when people understand what he's doing.
November, last week of November, we'll, we'll hear an, I actually, I think I have an idea what that might be about, but we'll, we'll leave it at that.
Very good. Yes.
Oh, yes. But which also, you, you mentioned Bruce Power, of course, which also leads to the, uh, the question of, of isotopes. And Bruce Power is, is a huge leader in, in, uh, that particular production of, um, nuclear isotopes for medical and technological purposes.
Do you know, in Ontario, we are certainly championing the opportunities to drive research and innovation. And Bruce Power is a perfect example of how not only are they, you know, they're not rest of their laurels by any means, they're always driving forward. And, and they've realized the opportunity to harvest isotopes to fight a variety of cancers now. And I look forward to seeing how they continue to innovate. And that's why the Nuclear Innovation Institute in Port Elgin is so important as well. Because, you know, it's one thing to be producing affordable, reliable, clean energy. And to also be a champion of other low, low-carbon emission energy solutions like hydrogen. But here they are, continuing to push the envelope and embracing people through the Innovation Institute to see what else can be realized through the whole nuclear sector, if you will.
Hmm, hmm. It's, we, we often, we kind of think of, of Gray Bruce as sort of the, okay, we're a long way from Toronto. But, but that doesn't matter, it, it seems. We, we seem to have, um, some really unique aspects and attributes, um, that are pretty cutting edge. We don't think of it that way, but it's pretty cutting edge stuff.
Yes, you know, um, again, it's, it's important to tip our hat to the people that are driving the, the leadership and, and inspiring the people and companies affiliated with Bruce Power to keep pushing the envelope. And I applaud them. I really admire what they do.
Well, let's, let's kind of riff off that a bit, um, Lisa, because one of the things that, that with all this development we've got is that, and it's, it's an issue that I, that is almost a common denominator. And I, when I, I interview our, our local politicians, our provincial, our federal politicians, it's housing. And housing is a huge issue. And I just happened to see some material that came out from, um, the health unit, uh, about housing. And while it's two years old, it's, we got housing issues. And that, that, that's, you know, thank you, Captain Obvious, but, you know, we do, so. What, 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 what's, what's your take on, on, on the housing needs and how, that we have here in Gray Bruce? And how do you, do, how is the government going to, um, deal with? Well, we're not Toronto, we're unique, where we, we have, we have housing issues. What's, what's the plan?
You know, I, I think it's first and foremost, you know, we need to recognize that because of Bruce Power being a huge economic driver in this region, there's a lot of companies wanting to partner up and, and embrace the value that our region brings to setting up new business. And whether it's Carlson Energy Solutions or Capital Power or all the, um, complementary companies that have established themselves in this region to support what's going on at Bruce Power. And it is driving a need for housing. But we need to be mindful that as we grow our economy and see community economic development continue to be thriving and strong, we need to make sure we have policies in place and opportunities for our government to support municipalities at the local level to realize housing goals. And I must say, in Bruce County in particular, um, the, I have 14 municipalities in total in the writing of Huron and Bruce. And all 14 are doing their very best in understanding the housing needs and making sure that they're moving forward with a plan to ensure that there's attainable, affordable housing for everyone. And so at the, at the provincial level, first and foremost, we're going to do everything we can to, to support our local municipalities, move forward and realize their goals of housing. You know, you mentioned Mayor Craig earlier. I can tell you with certainty that a number one priority for him is continue to make sure that housing continues to grow to meet the demand because of the economic growth that's happening in his particular municipality. And that's just one example. And so I think one of the important things to realize is that every step of the way, we're trying to move forward and, and be thoughtful. And if things aren't working right, we're going to revisit it. And I think that's an example of what Minister Paul Calandra has been doing as Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. You know, he's certainly reaching out, understanding what's needed and where needed, reversing the, the course so that we, government can get out of the way of local solutions. But, uh, another example of making sure that we're propping up opportunity to build housing. Just in the latest Fall Economic Statement, you know, Minister Bessin Falvi, our Minister of Finance, announced we're removing the HST portion off of purpose-built rentals. And because again, we need a whole mix of housing in this particular region. And so those are just two examples of how we're working with municipalities to move the dial, to make sure that people who choose this region to call home have opportunities to do just that.
Well, certainly, that, that the number of, uh, building permits that have been issued, um, hopping, happening, though I happen to live in Owen Sound, I noticed that, uh, I just received word this week that, uh, a 700-unit rental property has had their site plan approved. So, hey, we're, we're going to get some, get housing and it's gonna, it's gonna be moving forward. Well, we're, we're, as we speak, it's moving into that, uh, winter hiatus for, uh, for construction. Uh, just like roads, sometime around the first of December, everybody goes to sleep.
I would dare say though, yeah, I would dare say though, Dave, there, you might see some action where they can throughout the winter. Because, you know, we have a goal of building a significant number of homes, you know, and everybody's all hands on deck. And I just want to use this opportunity to give a shout out to our upper tiers as well. At the county level, they're working really hard to make sure that, again, the, the right supports are in place for municipalities to move forward.
Indeed. Um, I know many municipalities are, are meeting or exceeding any standards for, for, um, approvals. Uh, it's, it's not, at least not here. I, I can't, obviously can't speak for other parts of the province. But in this area, our municipalities appear to be, um, moving forward fast.
Yes, yes. And another thing that I'd be, I think we need to touch on is a number one focus of our government is to reduce burden and get rid of red tape, cut it right out. And so much so that Premier Ford has designated and built a whole new ministry around, uh, red tape reduction. And, uh, he, the, uh, part, Minister Gill is responsible twice a year to bring forward with less legislation that does just that, reduce, reduce burden and get rid of, you know, onerous legislation or dated legislation that proves to be hurdles. And that's just another way our government is working to make life a little bit easier at the local levels.
Sure, sure. It's, it's both of, I think the, the problem, I, I think a lot of people feel is frustration. We know we need this, but we forget that this does take a little bit of time. We want to get it done, but we won't, it does take time.
Yeah, we're really encouraging the shortening of approval timelines. Because again, we need housing now, right?
Do you expect that, um, your federal partners will, uh, will step up and, and with the, with the economic statement, there'll be some?
Yeah, well, you know what? Yeah, I can tell you that Minister Bessin Falvi, from a financial perspective, you know, asked the federal government to, to work with us. You know, again, we've taken the HST, uh, portion off of purpose-built rentals to, again, ease the burden of, of building housing that's absolutely needed. But to date, I, I don't believe the federal government has, has joined us in doing things like that. So let's hope, you know, that they, they did talk about helping with housing. And so it'll be interesting to see how it filters through and affects us at the local level.
Well, we've got, from this date, we've got about four months to the next federal budget.
Yes, that's, that's fair. Yes.
Five months, you know, we, we never know what the future holds, but we'll just have to wait and see. And speaking of, of federal matters, um, Ben Love, the MPP, your federal colleague, has a significant, uh, bill that has passed through all of the hoops in the House of Commons and is just one vote away from being passed in the Senate, which will remove the carbon tax on farm fuels. What's your take on that?
Oh, goodness gracious. I just hope the senators understand that they can't stall. You know what? We've missed an entire harvest season be, because of, um, I'll use the word, the delays that have been realized at the upper chamber. And, you know, it's not all senators. And there are some senators from Ontario that have worked really, really hard because the agri-food industry is near and dear to their hearts. And they truly understand the importance of making sure that we eliminate unnecessary costs that at the end of the day, drive up grocery prices on the shelf. And so I've been standing up in the house on a regular basis. And I'm so pleased to share with you that Premier Ford and all of my caucus colleagues have joined in the chorus of calling on the federal government to support C234. Ben Love has hit this one out of the park. He's listened, he understands. And it, it was a very thoughtful piece of legislation and I congratulate and thank him for getting it as far as he has. And I really hope that we have a senate that understands the importance across Canada that the carbon tax, as it is today, has absolutely driven the cost of everything up completely through the value chain in our agri-food sector. And, um, you know, if it's not the cost of drying corn coming off the fields right now, or the drying of soybeans, the heating of barns, it's the impact of carbon tax on trucks getting the value-added produce from the food manufacturer to the warehouse, then to the grocery store shelf. It just escalates and compounds whereby, you know, at the end of the day, people are feeling it on their, on their grocery bill. And so, um, I could go on and on about it, but in short, I And so um I could go on and on about it, but in short, I hope that we realize success at the Senate level because reducing the carbon tax on the heating of barns and the drying of corn and/or soybeans on farm, as well as um completely exempting the carbon tax on greenhouses uh by realizing the final twenty percent exception will really go a long way. And we shouldn't play games with the cost of food at the end of the day.
Sure, and I would, I've, what you have said is, is certainly consistent with uh Ben Love, but also Alex Ruff. And I would encourage people to, if you feel strongly about this particular issue, to reach out to your, the M P. And uh, show your support, that's one way people can get, become engaged in, in, in politics. Uh, and I'm sure your ministry is, is all over this.
Yes, yes, we are. And it's important to recognize that, you know, whether it's at the gas pumps or at the grocery store, prices are higher because of the carbon tax. And we're not at the finish line yet. That, that price we're realizing right now is only based on sixty-five dollars uh, a ton of carbon. And it's the goal of the current federal liberal government to raise that price to a hundred and seventy dollars a ton per carbon uh unit by twenty thirty. So the impact that we're feeling right now, for all intensive purposes, are going to be doubling by the time we hit the next decade, if we don't do something about that now. It, it's just not sustainable. And we hope that the federal liberal government will finally realize the negative impact on the cost of living for all of us.
Sure. Well, from, from, from more serious matters, let's, let's talk a bit about uh your schedule, you're, you're in the, the house is in session right now. And so legislature is sitting, so you're back and forth between uh Queen's Park and, and your home. But uh, what you got to, what, what do we have to look forward to in the legislature in the next uh few weeks?
Well, it's really busy around the legislature. Um, we have night sittings for the last two weeks and we're, probably they're going to continue through the next three to, because we have a lot of work to get done before the Christmas break. And night sittings can range from nine o'clock at night till midnight. And uh, yeah, it's a go, but uh you're going to see um a government that is continuing to work on its mandate to build Ontario. And I'll give you an example, you're hearing it here first, actually. So again, going into that last week of November, I'm going to be introducing legislation to update and enable our agri-food industry to modernize research and innovation. We have a piece of legislation right now on the books called Agricultural Research Institute of Ontario Act. It was designed and tabled and passed this law in nineteen sixty-two. And in nineteen sixty-two, that legislation was solely focused on agricultural science, science, excuse me, domestic science, meaning home economics and veterinary medicine. And today, in twenty twenty-three, we need to be focusing on so much more. In the spirit of building Ontario, we need to be looking at what does research and innovation look like in twenty twenty-three? Just this past week, I, I shared an announcement with the Federal Minister of Agriculture, Lawrence McCauley, uh just north of Hamilton. And it's a twenty-five million dollar investment to enable both farmers and food processors alike to invest in modernizing equipment to realize better efficiencies and increase production. And so we're going to partner that with the tabling of new legislation so that when we talk about agricultural research in twenty twenty-three and beyond, we're talking about robotics, we're talking about artificial intelligence, the list goes on and on.
That sounds very exciting. That sounds incredibly exciting because I, I know that um agriculture and agricultural employment is a huge part of, of our community, your writing and, and my writing. But um, you know, it's, it's absolute, hey, what did they say, farmers feed cities? So.
Absolutely. And you know, I, you, you shared something, Dave, that triggered a thought that I had. I don't know whether people realize that we're a major driver of the economy. When I say we, I mean our overall agri-food industry in Ontario. We employ right now eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand people. That's seven times the number of people currently employed in the automotive industry. The G D P, our contribution to the provincial gross domestic product, is forty-eight point eight billion dollars. And that's just food. When you factor in beverage, it goes higher than that. And that forty-eight point eight billion dollars is actually four times higher than the automotive sector. So we have a sector that, you know, let's be real, Gray Bruce, Huron, we're the breadbasket of Ontario, I can say that here. And uh, and very, and I say it in Queen's Park as well, to be honest. And there's so much opportunity. And we need to continue to push the envelope. For instance, we had an example of technology at my announcement with Minister McCauley on Monday. It is a little robotic weeder for commercial vegetable gardens. Because again, you know, in many cases, our sector, we have jobs without people. And so we're, we're again, looking to modernize. And this little robotic beast, he, he works for eight hours on one charge, which um translates into weeding about two hundred, or pardon, oh pardon me, two acres a day. So there's, I think it's safe to say our egg and food, agriculture and food sector are earlier, are early adapters of new technologies and modernizing the way we do business. And uh, I'm very proud of everything that happens in this region and throughout Ontario's agri-food sector.
Well, you know, if someone can come up with a, with a robotic uh weeder for my lawn.
You and my husband both, yes, exactly, I hear you, yes.
You, you, you'll, you'll, you'll have people run, running to, to the, to the store saying, show me, show me, here's my money, take it.
Yeah, exactly. And I also want to share with you that um, I apologize, I had a little tickle in my throat there a moment ago. Uh, but some people will relate to this. Yeah, I call it the royal cough. You know, we're just coming off the um, the hundred and first Royal Agricultural Winter Fair. And I just want to give a shout out to um four H members as well as people who just love competing and participating in an opportunity to show that their livestock or their crops are the best of the best. Because once a year, the country comes to the city uh and congregates at the Royal Agricultural Winter Fairs uh in fairs competitions. And I would dare say we had a lot of success from Bruce and Gray County this year.
Well, that's wonderful, Lisa. And you know what? We're out of time. So I want to, we are. So I want to thank you for being a part of Politically Speaking. Uh, it's great to hear you and yes, you, we will have you back because it's always good to keep up to speed on what's happening in, in your field and of course with your government. So, thank you and thank you, friends, for being a part of Politically Speaking. I guess today has been the Honorable Lisa Thompson, M P P for Huron, Bruce and the Minister of Agriculture. And yes, we'll talk again.
You bet. Thanks so much for having me, Dave.
This is Rogers TV. Connect with us by visiting our website or email us at comments@rogersTV.com.
Come on in, take a seat, or better yet. So aggressive D and knock down three. Athleticism and speed. A spicy P. Yes, this season brings change. Yes, this team has turned the page. But it's still a no G thing, always a Scotty B thing. When you want everything rappers. Nothing but sports in it.
This is Rogers TV. This program is brought to you by Ignite TV. Now you're in command. Visit Rogers dot com for more details.
Hi, I'm Tammy Schneider and I'm here for the King Carden District Chamber of Commerce. I am at the offices of M P X on Queen Street with Megan Fair. Welcome, Megan, thanks for joining us on Chamber Chat.
Thanks for having me, I feel very special.
I keep telling you, you should. For those of you that don't know, and I don't think there's many people in this town that don't, uh Megan was this year's recipient of the um Bruce Power Citizen of the Year Award. And we wanted to chat with her a little bit about that and some of the activities that she participates in the community. Now, congratulations, first off, it was a very.
Thank you.
I think you were as shocked as anybody else.
I was, there was a really hard suspense leading up to that envelope opening. Time stopped, I think.
I'm going to ask you a little bit about um what the award means to you and, and uh how it's sort of affected the last few weeks since you've been presented to it. I did want to read you something though first. I actually uh reached out to John Peavers. And for those of you who don't know John, John's the Director of Community Media Relations and Economic Development at Bruce Power. And he was the gentleman that actually presented the award to Megan uh on behalf of Bruce Power. And here's what he's had to say about Megan. Megan is a passionate, is passionate about King Carden and her boundless energy and commitment to community building is admirable. It takes courage to challenge the status quo and Megan has demonstrated the courage and innovative spirit to help make King Carden a safer and better place to live. It was just, it was so meaningful to have something like that. And I'll, I'll tell you, when I, I asked him for the vote, he popped right back with it.
Really?
So, yes.
He's not a, yeah, he's a busy guy too, so that, that's, that's really sweet.
So um, let's talk a little bit about the award first. Uh, you obviously weren't expecting it. And I, I know you've actually told me many times that you don't do what you do for accolades, that's not your, your makeup. So why do you do these sort of things and what happens when you're recognized like this?
Well, I think I, it's probably one of my biggest growing areas is learning how to accept, you know, when people give, you know, gratitude and thanks, but, I mean, for me, why I do it, it's uh my connection back to my dad. I lost my dad when I was twenty-one. And it's something that is so core to our relationship and how we spent our time together, that every time I do it and if I, like, I, I can't always help, right? I mean, I, even I have to have boundaries, but if there's something that I can do to help, you know, connect someone to another person or offer advice or take on, you know, a, a, a cause that means something to me. Um, I, I think that's why it's, it's just so important um to do that because it's almost like me keeping that connection to him. And, and I, and I live here, right? So I've got twin boys that just turned eleven years old, so they go to school in King Carden. My husband is an operator with Bruce Power, so, you know, like this is our community, this is our home and you know, it's, it's, I, I can't explain the feeling of like when you're driving through the, the community and you see something where it's like, you know, I was a part of that. Or whether it's like the boardwalk or, you know, some of the stuff down at the beach and it's just like being able to say to my kids, hey, look, mommy did that. And they're like, what?
Now, I, I know you're not originally from King Carden, how long have you been here for?
So uh, well, my husband was born and raised, so I can't put a date on. But uh, we met when we were in school and in two thousand and eight, he started working for Bruce Power. Um, two thousand and nine, we were married, bought a house. Today is actually our fourteenth wedding anniversary. Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it was coming home for him, right? Because all of his aunts and uncles and parents, this whole family is in the community. Which, you know, spurs the joke that my boss Barath always says that I'm just related to everybody, but it's only through marriage. Um, but I grew up in Dundalk in Gray County, which is in the middle of nowhere, but on a horse farm. And yeah, very rural upbringing. Um, so coming to King Carden was like, you know, a metropolis. So, yeah, yeah, so it's been a nice, I, I mean, I just, there's no, there's no way you can explain it to people, right? It's like, what's it like living in King Carden? Like, look at the lighthouse, look at the sunsets that we see every day, like, you just, you know, anyways. I'm a fan. Yes, I'm a fan.
So let's roll back to those days. What was the first organization that you became involved with when you moved back here?
So my father-in-law Gary Fair has been a Lions Club member, so I think, I don't know if he's hit the forty-year mark, but he's definitely high thirties. Um, and so I remember when we first moved into town, it was like I wanted to, you know, get involved or go meet people. And I went to a Lions meeting and I was certainly one of the younger people in the room, but my husband and I both got uh inducted in two thousand and ten, I think it was. And so, you know, we've been with the Lions Club since then. And my father-in-law would just joke that he's like, well, just stop putting your hand up. But it was, it was kind of neat because like, again, they're an organization that like is just about doing these little improvements to the community that you can see tangible things that like my kids can benefit from and.
That's wonderful. So um, am I right? Were you involved with the splash pad with that whole fundraising campaign?
Yeah, so like I wasn't as involved, I say the boardwalk, I was probably more involved with because that was before kids. But the splash pad, you know, like on the fundraising and volunteering and stuff and then, you know, we sold all of those um stones, the blocks that got engraved and so, yeah, I think that um now, so, you know, flash forward to being with N P X and then being able to kind of give back through this. We're helping out a lot with the all-wheels part and just try to come up with different ways of fundraising and donating money to the project, like whatever it needs, right? Because we all know that the community will really benefit from it. So, you know, it's always that really tough hurdle getting the funding all in place, but hopefully by next year, they can get the money and.
And move forward.
Yeah.
That would be wonderful. Do you want to talk about some of the other organizations that you've been involved with? Because I know you've, you've sat on boards and I, I've watched you M C events and, and uh.
Yeah, it's like, I don't know, I think somebody sees you someplace like, oh, let's just ask Megan to come. But yeah, so I think maybe one of the first things that you had done with the chamber when they were, when the municipal election, emceeing the um, the all candidate session. Um, the Lake Shore Women's Triathlon uh this, just this past year. Uh, I was asked to come and see that, which was a total first for me, but I, it was, it was a lot of fun, like to do. Um, the hospice is a really big thing for me. Um, I would say of all of the organizations right now, although I'm a Lions member, I do a lot for the fundraising side of the Here on Shore's hospice, you know, everything from, we have our standard hike for hospice every year, the Handbags Event. So all of the planning and organizing that goes in behind the scenes for those events, I'm, you know, involved with coming up with different ways of raising money because again, it's all a hundred percent community funded, so.
It, it strikes me too that you just sort of, I always think that you, you find yourself in a place where you're absolutely supposed to be.
Yeah, yeah.
I look at you here and I, I think about the core values that they have here and, and uh.
Do good things.
As you said, do good things and, and making that commitment to the community and how a great fit it is to have you here at, at N P X. It just seems to work out so well. And I know some of your activities have coordinated with what they do, but N P X does an awful lot too.
Yeah, and I mean.
And I don't mind if you mention some of them and give them a little pat on the back for that as well.
Yeah, so I mean, as a company, like you said, one of our core values is do good things and it's just really about keeping us all centered on, you know, we come to work to do a service for clients, but at the end of the day, like, you know, we're a small startup and we want to take that money and give it back to the communities and help support these different initiatives. So we have a weekly uh Community Impacts meeting where everybody in the company, I mean, we're pushing almost two hundred people. And whether you're down in Whitby, you know, supporting O P G or up here in this area with Bruce Power, we want our staff to give back because we know that it, you know, we want our staff to give back because we know that it, you know, if you can connect to something that has a purpose and a reason behind it for you, then, you know, it is, I mean, it's invaluable, like just to have that experience and connect with different organizations and see what goes on. And so, yeah, we've done a lot of different community events. I mean, through the pandemic, there was a whole host of things from, you know, GBH Strong Bucks for the businesses and trying to raise money. And yeah, so...
All sorts of stuff. And MPX has been a great partner with the Chamber too. I always applaud the work that they do and how they've partnered with us on a number of things too. And we really appreciate that support from them because, as you said, you are a big part of this community in terms of 200 employees and such. That's a big deal. So, I guess I think we should probably talk a little bit about, if someone came to you and they wanted to get involved, or they wanted to do something to help their community, what sort of advice would you give them? And how would you tell them to get started?
I think the biggest advice I give, and I give it all the time to people that ask, you know, like, "Why do you do these things? Why do you get involved?" Because it's just, I don't think it makes much sense when they're like, you know, you do so much. But if you can find something that you have purpose for, that you actually feel like a connection to, whether it's, you know, supporting causes related to cancer, a hospice, mental health, it doesn't matter what it is. It can be something very small, something very big. It can be something within your community in a completely unstructured way. I mean, we see it all the time from the King Carden Strong Group and where people are in need of help and other people reach out and offer help. And I think, you know, it can come in a multitude of ways, but it has to have meaning. I think anytime people do it and they can't connect back to the cause, you know, it's not, it doesn't usually end up being sustainable.
Right, right. I hear from a number of people too, the longest service clubs or volunteer, that it's that group that's hardest to get is probably the one in your age group, like that 30s and 40s. Because they may be working, they may not, but they probably have children. So, they've got, you know, sports after school and raising kids and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
So, even the smallest commitment to something, it might be, I know you've had experience with home and school.
Yes.
And put many hours into that.
Yeah, so like for me, if I look at all of the, you know, organizations that I've supported over the years, I always sort of resonated with a specific time in my life. So, yeah, for three years, I was the President of the Home and School for KTTPS in town here. And my kids went to school there for those three years, right? So, that's why I did it. And, you know, and then the hospice is just really more of, we lost two family members this past, almost a year ago in the hospice within 10 days. And then I had my own personal experience from grandparents before that. So, it's just, you know, I want these things to be there for me, so you have to support them. Same like the downtown, right?
And then we all benefit, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Megan, it has been a pleasure talking with you today. I think you're a celebrity. I know you don't think you're a celebrity, but thanks so much for joining us on Chamber Chat and sharing some of your thoughts with us. And congratulations again.
Thank you.
And we'll be right back.
Welcome to the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Stalow people. The Stalow are people of the river. I'm so thankful for the courage and resiliency of our ancestors who lived on this land since time immemorial. Each of us have gifts from the Creator, and our Creator has a plan and purpose to be fulfilled in our territory. As we embrace our traditional teachings, we can lead the next generation into the fullness of what our Creator designed. Our shared history reveals a broken relationship. But as all Canadians commit to hear truth, acknowledge injustice, we can learn to walk in our traditional way, Lethamot, with a good heart and a good mind. Then all of our lives will be enriched. Qusay.
Hi, I'm Nico Addy.
And I'm Ethan Burris. Catch attack hockey on Rogers TV.
Hi, I'm Tammy Schneider with the King Carden Chamber of Commerce and welcome to Chamber Chat on Rogers TV. Now, I'm here in one of our favorite stores in downtown King Carden today. This is Daryl Perry, and Daryl is the owner of Penetang Gear on Queen Street. Welcome.
Thanks, Tammy. Thanks for having us.
Oh, well, so glad you could join us. The weather's getting colder, obviously, and you've got some beautiful things here. So, let's just take a quick look at some of these lovely sweaters and jackets and mitts.
Yeah. Well, as you know, like, you know, we've always been about kind of being the warmth experts, both from a kind of an outdoor travel point of view, but also just for everyday stuff.
Absolutely.
I love function. I'm a big function-first kind of person.
You do really have some great things in here. And with Christmas right around the corner, perfect time to pop in and grab a gift or maybe get something for yourself.
Well, absolutely. Like, it's that, once the weather turns, and it has, and, you know, people start looking towards not just gifting, but also their hands, feet, walking the dog, all those, shoveling the driveway, all those things, in addition to enjoying the trails and all that sort of stuff. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, Daryl, why don't you give us a little bit of a history lesson? Where you came from, how you ended up here, how long Penetang Gear's been here for?
Yeah, sure. So, we're actually coming up to our 10-year anniversary. We moved up here in March, during March break with our kids, back in 2014. And for us, it was the next stage of our family's life. My wife's from Kitchener, so she knows the area very well. But we looked all over Ontario and back then, our kids were, you know, five and six or so. So, you know, the move was a big part of our lives. And so, my background's in consumer goods marketing. And I was yearning to be back talking to people on a daily basis and getting to know our customers better. But more importantly, we wanted to be part of the community. And that was a big part of why we're in, not just Bruce County, but King Carden. From a business point of view, we had a number of kind of business plans that we had in mind. And, but the need in town for retail back then was quite high and still is. And so, we decided after engaging a number of kind of key people, the head of the Chamber then, the BIA, some of our other retailers, to open up Penetang Gear. Our business is an extension of our desire to be part of the community. That was always part of our plan. We kind of obviously want to listen to the community and bring in things that they need. And we've evolved too, as our store has evolved. Being 10 years old, you go through stages in retail. You go through the honeymoon new phase where everything's shiny and new, and then you kind of get to the reality of it all. And over the years, we've evolved, as I said, with the need of the street and of the community. I think one thing that we've strived for though is to always be function-first. We're not a fashion store. We're a function store. We truly believe that, you know, once people understand they need something for a purpose, whether it's wet weather gear because they love being out in the trails, or it's just merino wool warmth stuff that they can sleep in, wear out, travel in and so forth. So, we've kind of evolved with that. We have some interesting part of the businesses, the business that's remnants of our previous when we first opened up. And that's our swimwear range. We actually, I think a lot of people think of swimwear and they think of summer. We are the opposite. We think of the pool. Having grown up in a small community, I know we went to the pool, not the beach. And so, we look after, we service Owen Sound Aquatic Club right down to Godrich and inland to Hanover and further. So, we have a really, a strong part of our business is pool gear. So, we're about to come into pool season when folks really do thrive at the pool. It's a social thing for a lot of folks too, not just an exercise thing or a way to have fun with your kids. But, so we have a number of elements to our business. But right now, we're all about obviously gifts, but also warmth. All our really key warmth pieces are kicking in right now. All our best seller stuff that people know us for, like our merino wool socks, or our thicker kind of fleece-lined pants that you can kind of shovel the driveway in, walk the dog in, snowshoe in, and are all purpose. So, again, that function-first approach. One thing we are, we do almost every year, at different times of the year, is we pick a charity of choice.
I just wanted to actually talk about that.
Yeah.
You are known for having all these lovely timeless styles and clothing apparel. But you're very much committed to the local community. And I know you have a number of things that you actually participate in throughout the year.
We have a lot of fun.
So, let's talk about some of those things that you support.
Absolutely.
That obviously need awareness and...
And there's a lot of them. There's a lot of them, big time. And we try and help a variety of charities. We try and collaboratively work with a variety of our fellow businesses. But sometimes things just come across our plate that are very relevant to us, not only to our customers, but to us. So, for instance, at the moment, it's the Lucknell Animal Shelter. We actually started a relationship with a local knitter, Patty, who is known for knitting religiously, but donating a lot of it to the hospital. And I loved what she did. I grew up on a sheep farm, so wool and wool products are really important to us. But, and so Patty kind of started, we bought a lot of her things last year and started donating a portion of it to a charity. This year, we chose the Lucknell Pet Rescue.
Now, is this one of Patty's creations here?
This is one of her creations.
Beautiful. It's soft.
It's so beautiful.
It just looks so warm.
Well, and all individual, they're all unique. There's a big variety to choose from. And we also get her, I call them shoulder wraps. And we have a large variety of those. They're very different, but the proceeds from all of our scarves, 100% of the proceeds go to our charity of choice. And then we've also partnered with, we're lucky to partner with Karen from The Grind and make some dog treats. So, we're selling dog treats. Again, all proceeds go to our charity of choice, which is great.
And that's Lucknell Pet.
And that's the Lucknell Pet Rescue. Unfortunately, the rescue centers in our area are brimming with animals, which is a real, just a sign of the times perhaps. So, it's a great cause. We're happy to support it and we're asking our customers to help us. Of course, we have others. We have other pieces. We have, for, I don't know, I think it was our eighth year this year, do the King Carden Yoga Festival on the pier in August. And we work with Shaky Rhythm Yoga to put on that kind of more unique event to celebrate our outdoors. But yeah, over the years, we've done everything from the tobogganing Grand Prix on Family Day in February.
That's right.
Just, just things that promote the beautiful space we live in, right? And most of them are free things that all of us can do, but sometimes living in a beautiful place you forget, right?
Well, that's really part of your philosophy of working here, is it? Is it not? That's part of your core values?
Absolutely.
And I know I've seen you do things with some of the vets from Legion come up and collect them on Canada Day.
I love the Legion guys. We have, and I think, who doesn't? I mean, they're a great group of people, working for a great cause. But yeah, we've done everything, you know, there are so many charities we've worked with over the years and we try and spread the joy. The money we raise from the Yoga Fest goes to a charity of choice, and every year's different. But in addition to that, like we talked about, we've got Patty, who, you know, obviously created these beautiful scarves. She will be coming into the window on the 11th of November, which is going to be exciting. She offered, she said, "I want to help. What can I do?" And I said, "Well, how about we clear out the window and we set you up in a chair, a cozy chair, and feed you tea and coffee?" And she's going to knit. So, on the Saturday, she's going to spend a couple of hours in the window. We'll have some fun with that. One of the things we've learned this year, not having a window and having limited people on the street due to the downtown dig, is to value that window. And that's why we have a really full schedule for November and December. But you'll find that as we progress through into 2024, we'll have a ton of activity on that street because that's the real value of King Carden, that Queen Street, in my perspective.
Absolutely. So, let's talk a little bit about some of the events that are coming up over the next few weeks. You're right, the cold weather's here. You don't know how that happened, but I woke up in the morning and I was knee-deep.
I've got to say, it puts a smile on my face because that's what we sell. So, but it comes when it comes and it goes also when it feels like it. So, for us, so we have a number of specials going on. At the moment, our best-selling goose down coats from Cool, we've sold them for years. They're 800 fill goose down. They're the best warmth you can buy. And we have them at 20% off for the next couple of weeks to around the 12th, I believe it is, of November. They're a great product. And if you really want lightweight warmth, then that's, it's a proven commodity. We sell them for men and women. And then we also are doing this year, something I've been wanting to do for a long time, and that's gift combos. So, we sell a lot of accessories. We have a lot of the most popular brands like Combi and Smartall Icebreaker, you know, Fray's scarfs out of Germany. And so, we're going to offer you a special deal where if you buy a scarf and a toque, or a scarf and gloves, then you'll get 20% off. And then if you buy all three pieces, we're calling it the three-piece gift deal, you buy, you get 30% off your entire purchase. And that's for the whole month of November. So, there's a great opportunity to save on your accessories and great gifts. They're unique, one of a kind, made in King Carden.
Gifts or for yourself?
Well, you could gift yourself.
Let's just make that an option as well.
It becomes, yeah, exactly. It often goes hand in hand. We are happy to gift wrap, so obviously gift wrapping is free in November for any of your purchases from Penetang Gear. Then some of our other things, we obviously have Hometown Christmas coming up and Ladies Night. Both of those nights, as they are late in November, are phenomenal. And more importantly, I think we're known for our seasonal drinks. Let's call it that, our winter warmers.
That's Christmas cheer in a nutshell.
Let's call it Christmas cheer. It's always guaranteed to be chilly outside. And then a surprise for Ladies Night is we actually are giving away free massages from Mr. Eric Cunliffe and his team.
What a great idea.
Well, we work very closely with Eric and his team. He's a great guy. He's a King Carden, Queen Street business. And so, we're going to, with every, you purchase $100 on that night and you get a free massage while your goods are being wrapped. So, it's a pretty great deal.
That's outstanding. Now, are you going to put them in the front window?
Eric is going to be in the front window. He doesn't know all the details yet. Like, we'd love him to dress up in like an elf's costume, if he would. And then we'll have his partner at the back. So, you will, you know how busy it gets. So, we will have one set up in the window and one at the back of the shop. Come and watch if you really want to. It's up to you.
That sounds like fun. So, we've got Hometown Christmas on November 17th.
Correct, yeah.
Ladies Night is on November 23rd.
The week after, yeah, yeah.
And the Santa Claus Parade is December 2nd.
Correct. Another great night, yeah.
Just 10 seconds on what's happening for the men this year.
Yeah, so Men's Night is, we wanted to do something for men, for shopping. Now, there are, we have a new business, men's business on the street as well. So, we're getting momentum for more businesses really pushing behind it. So, and at the moment, like, there are plans for festivities just like there are for ladies. We're going to surprise everybody with ours because I haven't quite finalized it all. But it is going to be a great night in similar spirit to Ladies Night, where, you know, there's drinks involved after it and an incentive to attend our, you know, hospitality restaurants, pubs and all of that stuff. And that'll be exciting for guys.
Connect with us by visiting our website or email us at comments@rogersTV.com.
Hello, I'm Liz Dowdswell, Lieutenant Governor of Ontario. In 2008, carbon monoxide, a deadly invisible gas, killed an entire family in our province. That tragedy led to a new law requiring homes with potential CO sources to have alarms. John Geniak's family members passed away that day, and he shares his story to save others.
Please make sure you have working seal alarms in your home. Protect your family today.
Public transit, garbage pickup, parks and recreation programs, snow removal on your street. How can you stay informed about these and other important local services? Tune to City Council Coverage on Rogers TV. See your community leaders at work on Rogers TV City Council Coverage.
January 18th on City TV.
Let's get to work.
The wait.
Remember me?
Is over.
Fight fire with fire.
Looks like we're going for a ride.
Law and Order Thursday returns with all-new episodes.
NYPD, show me your hands. Don't move.
We're going to get this guy together like we always do.
Law and Order, SVU, and Organized Crime. New season's premiere, January 18th on City TV or streaming on City TV+. New season's premiere, January 18th on City TV or streaming on City TV Plus.
You're watching Rogers TV.
This program is brought to you by Ignite TV. Now you're in command. Visit Rogers.com for more details.
Thanks for joining us today. We are at Sobel Speedway, which is located between Hepworth and Sobel Beach in Bruce County. And today, we have Jim and John with us, who, Jim has been the announcer here for how many years?
So since, don't want to say the years, but since, since 1985.
Oh, my goodness. And John, you were the general manager?
I'm the general manager for the last two years.
And you're a racer?
I, they tell me I was, Jim tells me I was a racer. Because now I'm here, I can't be in two places at once.
Right, well, that makes sense. It does, it does.
My car, I still own a car and it races in Flamborough down by Hamilton. But my heart's here at Sobel Speedway.
Oh, amazing, amazing. Now, Jim, you've been here for quite a few years. How long has the Sobel Speedway been here?
The track was built in 1969. It, you know, we're what, 54 years old? Started out as a dirt track and was paved a couple of years later. And it's been ashfall ever since.
Oh, I can remember being here as a kid. My dad was a mechanic on Don Diebel's race car. And I'm thinking that probably would have been the 70s, thereabouts.
The 70 era.
Yeah, yeah. And the stands were full then. So it's been something that's, it has longevity, right? It's, people are so interested in it.
It's a family sport, you know? Families, that's who come. Every car brings 10 people to the track.
Oh, I never thought of it that way.
And the more cars you have, the more people you have in the stands. It's a family sport. One thing I like to say is that you can recognize people in the stands. They have their seats all picked out and the same people go back to the same places, night in, night out.
Right, those are the ones that have the cushions and the blanket and they're the seasonal hardcore race watchers.
They're here all the time.
Every, every week, every show.
Every week and every show.
There's, there's a couple of brothers and their mother, used to be the father as well, sit in front of me every night. And they've done that ever since 1985.
Oh, my goodness. So, well, you'll personally know all of them because you're the announcer. And you're, apparently, they call you the voice of Sobel Speedway?
I hear that, yes. Like the people, you, you get to know people by name and certainly by face. You know, and everybody speaks to me, calls me Jim. You know, and I, I like to say that I know most of them by name and, but I certainly can recognize their face.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, well, yeah, especially when it's a family.
When I raced up here, when we would come up with the car, he would always walk through the pits, talk to every driver. He would come over to you, he hasn't seen you in six months. He'll walk right over to you, call you by name, ask you the right questions. And then when you win the race, he's out there asking the same thing.
Same thing.
Knows things about you that you don't think he knows.
But he knows.
It comes out.
It comes out. So how many different races then happen here typically on a race night?
Well, we generally run about four classes a night, sometimes three, but mostly four. A couple of weeks ago on the long weekend on Saturday night, we actually ran six. So we had to start an hour earlier and we went right to our curfew, but we did get the show in.
Right to our curfew. 11 o'clock is a hard checkered flag. We're not allowed to go over 11 o'clock unless we have an emergency. I stood in the infield looking at the clock, looking at the starter, looking at the clock. And it was 11 o'clock and 15 seconds. We do the checkered flag.
And that's because of, is that because of sound or?
Sound.
The volume of the race?
We have bylaws for noise, so you have to respect the neighbors.
Yeah, oh, definitely, yeah.
You have to respect the neighbors. Like, the neighborhood has changed since the track was built in 1969. Not, not everybody that, that is living around the track now was here when the track was built. And times do change.
Really good neighbors, though. We, we work with all of them.
That's good, yeah.
There's really no complaints anymore. There used to be, but we, we've worked with everybody. If they have a problem, all they have to do is call. The phone, the phone number for the track goes to my cell number, so.
You're the guy.
They can just call and all answer, it'll be a person they're talking to and we'll work through it.
Yeah.
You know, the track, the track employs 40 people.
Doesn't really.
On a Saturday night, there's 40 paid employees. This is a, this is a small business and we have to run it like a small business.
Right.
But the, but the different, the different races that we run, we have a junior late model class that is our future drivers. They're seven to 12, are they not? Seven to 12, and they look like little late model cars. And that's the two, the two young drivers that we're going to talk to later on.
Okay.
Are both out of that class. They started in that class.
And they've moved up then?
And they've moved up to what is now called the Combined Fours. The Combined Fours are four-cylinder, anybody that, it's a four-cylinder car, has to have fenders and a safety equipment and it can run. But we, we put a limit on the time to keep the cost down. It's 17.5 seconds. Don't go any faster than that or you have to let three cars pass you.
Oh.
It's, it's to keep the cost down and keep racing alive up in Sobel Beach. And then the next class up is the United Eight, does the same thing.
Okay.
But eight cylinders.
And, and older? Different age range?
You can be 13 to 95. If you can wheel the car, you can drive the car.
Do you have to have a license?
No.
Really? Oh, my, okay.
Your insurance, if you took your street car out here.
Yeah.
Your insurance doesn't cover you. As soon as you go on the racing service, you're not covered anymore.
Done, okay.
But no, you don't need a license. You need a helmet, a fire suit, gloves, a seatbelt, current seatbelt, a racing seatbelt.
Which is, oh, a five-point.
A five-point harness.
Right.
I, I do this, but it's a lap belt, two shoulder belts and a, and a crotch belt that hold you, hold everything where it needs to be. So if you're in an accident, you're not hurt.
Right, right.
And then we have our Inex Legend card that we run four or five shows a year.
Wow. Now, you mentioned there's other things that happen here as well. So it's not just about racing. There's, there's lots of other things that this has hosted.
So in the background today, you can see we're setting up for a Monster Truck Show. We have it here tomorrow night and on Sunday afternoon. We've had concerts here in the past. We had Kim Mitchell once, we had Loverboy, we had Lori Morgan. We've, there's been, you know, numerous events that have been held here at the racetrack. We had Snowcross a year ago as well, in February.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
So there's, there's lots of things that the facility can be used for.
Right, yeah. And typically, it's just open on weekends, though.
Yes, we do run one Wednesday night show. The week, we like to call Canadian Speed Weeks, leading to the civic holiday weekend. We have what we call the Dash for Cash on a Wednesday night. Simply to capture the, the crowd that's here at the beach on holidays. Because typically, the last two weeks in July is our big holiday weeks there.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt.
Our three big, our three divisions run on that Dash for Cash. Our Roots Gas Bar, United Eights, that's the eight-cylinder class. Our Launa Local 1059 Combined Fours, that's the four-cylinder class. And our Russell Fencing Junior Late Models. So they all get extra laps for those and extra money.
Something John touched on there with the junior late models. We have seen numerous drivers that have gone on from the junior late models to start them. J.R. Fitzpatrick started here and ended up in NASCAR. And, you know, Andy Camrath is a local Ontario legend coming through the ranks. So it's just, generally, it's second-generation drivers. Their dads racing the big classes. The kids are racing in the junior late models. And now we're seeing that repeated again.
Yeah.
So it seemed to be a division a few years ago that maybe was dying out, but now it's back bigger than ever.
Really? And it's, it's something that I'm not familiar with, like, I, I don't follow. And I guess I, I should be. It's something that's so local, but I just, I get busy on the weekends.
High adrenaline and, you're at the beach and everybody wants to relax. But you want a shot of adrenaline, come to the Speedway on Saturday night and, and listen to the noise.
And listen to the noise, yeah.
Sobelspeedway.ca, our schedule's up there. So every year, we post it, once we finalize it, we post it up and come on up.
Right, and there's concession booths here as well that?
Full concession, hamburgers, hot dogs, sausages, onion rings. We're a licensed grandstand, we have a bar.
Oh, really?
Beer and coolers.
Yeah, yeah.
We like to say it's affordable family fun.
Right.
And it's, like I say, it's a family show.
Right.
And we keep it clean. It's just fantastic. We're particularly proud of our long weekend shows, racing on the Saturday and the Sundays. And we, we bring in, you know, visiting divisions. We have the APC Series here twice. We have the Canine Midgitsen. Like John said, we have the Legends as well.
Oscar Hot Rods.
Right. So how many, how many people can actually sit in the grandstands? Like, do you keep a total of your admission? All of them? That's a good answer. That's a good answer.
I think the stands hold 4,000.
Wow.
And we, and we'll fill it on the good weekends, we'll fill it.
You will?
Yep.
That's amazing.
You can go down to the pits after the races, too, and meet the drivers. Some drivers, you sit in their cars. Some drivers have hero cards, they'll sign them for you and you can take them home.
Wow.
And that's, you know, every night after the races are over, the pick gate is open. And, you know, we like to say, go to the souvenir stand, get a checkered flag, get your driver to autograph it.
To autograph it?
Yeah.
Well, it's like hockey, right? That, that autograph might carry you through to the, to the fellows that are now into NASCAR, right?
Again, when I raced your, when I had the Blues Clues car, I had Blues Clues on the back of my car. It's, it's a, it's the Hobby Club, which is old P49 coupes and coaches. And I used to give away Blues Clues stuffed animals. Really big up here, I'd walk up and down with my crew and throw them up to the stands.
Yeah.
And then we had a draw once for a, a Lifeside, like, it was a big. And the girl that won it, that would have been 28 years ago, still has it in her bedroom.
Oh, my word.
I bumped into her mother and she says, that Blues Clues, when she got married, she took it with her and it's in the corner of their bedroom.
Oh, my gosh.
So the memories that are made, it sticks with the people that come to the track.
That's right, that's right.
You know, you end up working at a racetrack, you grew up around racing.
Yeah, yeah.
You just, I love it.
It's the thing. And talking about racing this morning, I had to take my granddaughter, pick her up and take her to day camp. And I said that I was going to be interviewing Leila and Ryder. And she looked at me and said, Leila, Leila, I know that name. She said, I went to the races last summer and seen her and she went to my school. So it's, it's funny, the connections that kids are making. And yeah, that's creating the following now, right? Our, our new, new racers.
Yeah, Leila is a real competitor, as is Ryder. And they all, you know, they started in the junior late models and now they're racing with people that are twice their age.
Oh, that's amazing.
And you wouldn't know it, the way that they compete out there.
Yeah, I agree with Jim. When, when they're in their car, you don't know. Wait, wait till you meet them. When we go down and talk to them, and then you come to the track and watch them race, you wouldn't, you wouldn't believe who's driving the car.
Okay.
Because they can wheel the car. So let's go down and see them.
Perfect, let's go.
My name is Matthew Rutledge. I'm a Sixty Scoop survivor, born in Red Lake, was adopted from there to Toronto, the age of four. A lot of our brothers and sisters, family members, got separated from each other. That was the government's goal, to break that connection from brothers and sisters. Basically, taking the Indian out of the child. Right now, they're still trying to find themselves. Originally, my birth name is Harvey Alvison. In my high school days, teens, I was trying to fit in to society. I knew I was First Nations, but I didn't know who I was inside. I think later in life, I started that journey. I am proud, and it's not my man, who I am now. I love life, who I am.
I'm Carol Merton. Please join me for Health Link, a program connecting home, community and healthcare. Please join me and watch Health Link on Rogers TV.
Join us next week on Gray County Life as we'll be talking to Lauren Best about the upcoming Owensound Memoir series.
We'll also be joined by Renee from the Owensound Animal Shelter to meet another animal looking for a forever home.
Welcome back. We are here at Sobel Speedway and we are going to talk to Ryder and Leila, who are young racers here at Sobel Speedway. Ryder, I am so happy that you're here at Sobel Speedway. I bet you you had to get up early this morning.
Oh, yeah, I had to get up really early.
Now, whereabouts are you from?
I'm from Orangeville, Ontario.
Great, I love your car. Orange is my favorite color, which I know that has nothing to do with racing, but a girl thing, I think. But how did you get involved with racing?
So when I was really young, I actually, my dad took me here in Watton and we would watch the races. And I, I would see the little, small junior late models.
Right.
And I always asked my dad, I want to race those.
Oh, neat. So what age then were you when you started racing?
I was nine years old.
You were nine, oh, my gosh. Now, tell me what your car was like when you were nine?
So my car, it was not like this big. It was probably up to like the window.
So it was like a minicar type thing?
It's called a junior late model, so it's
Okay.
a quarter scale of like a big late model.
Wow.
Probably went from like the nose of the car.
Right.
Just to like right here.
So it was fairly, fairly compact?
Yes.
Now, I noticed on this car, you've got the number 88. So how do you get your number?
I've always wa, grew up watching like NASCAR and my favorite driver's always been Dale, Dale Earnhardt Jr. And that's always been my favorite number ever since I was little, so.
Wow, that, that's a great way. I'm glad you're able to at least pick your number.
Yes.
Now, this car, I don't think is an automatic. I see a stick in the center of it. So did you have to learn to drive the standard?
Yes, it didn't take long. It only took like maybe two, three tries. And then I like was able to put it in the gears and switch it and all that.
Good for you. But there's extra things in this car that I see that's really foreign to me. You've got a lot of switches on the, on the roll cage that's inside it? So what's that all about?
So the far switch right over there is power steering. Because this car is so heavy, we need, I need help turning the thing. So we had to install electric power steering.
Wow.
And then the fourth one, that is the fans to keep the car and the engine cool.
Yeah.
And then the third one's the gauge. The second one is like the fuel pump. The first one is the ignition. And then the button is like you press it all and then it all starts up and fires.
Wow, you have a lot of things to be aware of, let alone driving on the track. I, that's, that's very impressive. I do well to park my car when I'm just, you know, driving, just saying. Another thing that you've got here that I'm really interested in is your sponsorship. How do you get your sponsors?
Me and my dad, when we first started, we would just go like door to door. And we would hand out letters that would ask for sponsorship. And if they got back to us because they were interested in sponsoring, we would get sponsored. And now we just have like our main sponsors that we keep on asking if they want to sponsor again.
Very good.
And if they don't want to, we'll have to go look for some new ones.
Right. So who are your main sponsors then Ryder?
The biggest sponsor on this car is Luscious Bakery. And then there's also Canadian Tire, Orangeville. They supply all like the parts that we use and like the parts that we use to repair and they fix the car.
Right. Definitely. Sponsorship is key. Now where, do you hope to continue racing? Is, do you have an objective doing, doing this?
My goal would be to make it to NASCAR, but.
Wow. I should be getting your autograph now. That's pretty cool. That's, good for you that you've got aspirations to be at NASCAR because that's, that's the big league, isn't it? So have you won any races Ryder?
Yes. So my first race win was back in 2020 during COVID. There was only two tracks open at the time and one of them was Varney and one of them was Grand Ben.
Right.
And halfway, about halfway through the season, I got up to speed with like the top front runners and then I ended up winning my first race.
That's awesome. I bet you that was quite an adrenaline rush. Pretty excited, eh? And do you hope to continue on racing when you get older?
Oh, yes. I, like I said, I want to make it to NASCAR.
You're gonna make it to NASCAR. That's fabulous. Thank you so much for coming to Sobel Speedway today to talk to us. And I wish you all the best in your racing career.
Thank you.
So we're here with Leila and you started racing at what age?
Eight.
At eight. Oh my word. Now, were you in this car?
Uh, no, I had a junior late model and I raced that for five years.
Oh my goodness. And I noticed your number is seven. How did you pick your number?
I was number seven for a lot of my sports and I guess there was 67 was already on the car and I needed to race that weekend.
Okay.
So I said, why don't we rip the six off and then I'll just be number seven? And then I just kept it all the way through.
You kept it all the way through. That's awesome. Now again, you've got sponsors, the same as what Ryder had mentioned. Is that important for racing, is having sponsors?
Yes, very. If I didn't have all of my sponsors, I don't think I'd be able to race. For like, we need to spend money for the tires, the gas, to keep the car going.
Right.
All that stuff.
And who are your major sponsors for this car?
National Powersports Financing, Illiam Industries, IG Wealth Management, and Strike Energy Systems and Two Speed Motorsports.
Yep. And I see Gray Fair's Road on the side of it as well. So you've got quite a few, quite a few sponsors. Now, have you had any wins?
In the junior late model, I had many, but I haven't had any in this car yet.
Okay. Now this is a new car to you?
Yes, I just got this year.
Oh, wow. Now is this an automatic or a standard?
Um, standard.
Oh, so that's a whole new learning curve as well. Oh, I totally get where you're coming from when it comes to a standard. And now do you have interesting features inside your car as well that you have to really? Like one thing I noticed, you don't have a steering wheel.
I do.
But it's not on the post?
No. I just have it, I normally just have it sitting over there.
Okay. So that's something that you have to take off?
On and off to get in and out of the car.
To get in and out of the car. Very interesting. And of course you've got the roll cage and all that lovely stuff that's, that's in there as well.
Yep.
Any scary moments on the track? I noticed you've got a few bumps and bruises on your new car.
I wouldn't say scary.
No?
I slept my junior car once.
You did?
That was probably the scariest.
The scariest for you or scariest for maybe the people watching in the stands as well?
Well, maybe for my mom.
I totally get where you're coming from with that. Yeah. Now, are you hoping to keep going on with racing as well?
Yes, I am. I really hope. I mean, every driver's dream is to make it to NASCAR, obviously.
That's right.
So that would be the dream. Yeah.
And that would be awesome because you being a female too.
Yeah.
That would be really cool to get into that division.
Yeah.
It would be. Oh my word. One thing I've noticed with the cars being out here on the track is you don't have enough air in your tires. Is there a reason for that?
Well, normally it has a little bit more air than that.
Yeah. But is it having to do with the race part of it?
Yes, part of the setup.
It is. Yeah. So you get to come and do like warm-up laps or do you get to practice or do you just?
Like on race days?
Yeah.
We just do like two or three practices, I guess.
You do?
Then we have our heats in the feature.
Wow. So you get to at least come out and kind of warm up and get the jitters? Cause I know I would be really nervous.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And how do you get placed in the lineup? Like is there, do you pick a number? Is it luck of the draw or?
For the heats, you draw a number and depending on where you place in the heats is where you are for the feature.
Oh, okay. Okay. So then as you progress, you could possibly get closer as?
Yeah. Depending on how many cars there are, they'll do that. But that's normally how it is.
It is. Oh my goodness. Now are you the only female that's racing? Or are there other females that are in the race circuit?
There are other ones, but at Sobel, I'd say I'm the only one in the mini or combined fours. And there's like two other mini stock drivers, I guess.
Okay. That are trying to, that are working their way through, through it as well. Wow. Well, this is so impressive. I'm, I'm, my hat off to you because I don't think I could do this. It would be a little nerve wracking and yeah, I would bite my nails and wouldn't be well at it at all. Thank you very much for coming here today because yes, you had to get your car here. And I wish you all the best in the racing career. Hi. We're here from Rogers. How are you? That's good.
Welcome to Sobel Speedway.
Intermission. Okay. Good. Thank you. We'll get you a hot dog? Just look at me. Don't look at him. There we go. There we go. Ready. Thank you. Sugar flag. There's Leila. Right here. And there's Ryder. Get tight. Oh, no, 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 no. Cut him off, cut him off, cut him off. Cut him off. He's gonna lose it. I don't know. Oh, no. Breaking up on her. Yep. Watching him take over. I know. Oh my word. Hey, the goal, Leila.
Leila with the win. She is in victory lane. Leila driving for National Powersports Park.
We've had an absolute fantastic time here at Sobel Speedway. When you do come, make sure you bring your earplugs, but they do supply them here as well. It's been a fantastic night. So check out Sobel Speedway and we'll see you again next time on wandering Gray roots.
Connect with us by visiting our website or email us at comments@rogersTV.com.
Hey, I'm Jay Crawford.
And I'm Sider Gano. And make sure you tune in on Attack Rap every week on Rogers TV to make sure you know what's going on with your Owens Sound Attack.
Man, is there a lot of pressure on this young fighter here tonight?
Fighting is life.
This is my belt. I earned this in blood, paid in full. This is mine.